Okay, good evening. As mentioned by the deputy mayor at the top of the hour, the council has been meeting in executive session for approximately 30 minutes on the topic of pending litigation. So we're now ready for the one item scheduled for the study session this evening, a continued discussion?
Before we get into that, I did mention when I opened the meeting, but should mention again if anybody is joining, that we've had a technical problem with BCTV, or BTV with the equipment, so we just have the one camera that's on us for tonight, they're working to resolve it.
So it won't be quite the production when you watch it again. All right, we're ready for one item scheduled for study session time this evening, and a continued discussion on the proposed downtown livability land use code amendments, and we're hoping we can get this work through and move on, but city manager, you want to introduce?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor and council members. Tonight is the sixth session that the council is taking up the livability initiative since receiving the recommendation from the planning commission. This topic was last in front of you on September 18th, which was approximately two weeks ago. We are returning with the four main issues, four issues that you asked us to bring back for consideration this evening. And as you mentioned, Mr. Mayor, that our hope is that we get final direction so that we can bring back a formal ordinance in two weeks from now, on October 16th. So with that, I am going to turn over to Matt Cummins, our director of planning and community development. He is joined by Emile King, the strategic manager for planning and community development, as well as Carol Helen, our code and policy director. Matt?
Thanks, Brad. So we're back to revisit a couple of issues that you've had some discussions on here the last couple of study sessions on this topic, and one new one that came up at the last meeting that we've tried to provide you some additional information in your agenda memo this evening. What we would intend and propose for the council is to walk through each of those four items and then pause at the end of each one, see what your dialogue is, see if you have any questions for us, and see if we can receive direction that we can then make sure we get scribed up correctly into a new ordinance that we would hope we might be able to bring back to you on October 16th for adoption. So the four issues that are still outstanding relate to proposed floor plate reduction. This is the proposal to require buildings to get slightly smaller on the upper floors above the existing height limits in the zoning code in exchange for extra height. The downtown linear buffer, and then the setback between towers and towers are defined as those portions of a building that extrude up above the podium, and that was specifically relating just to the interior property line, and I know that's a discussion the council's had for some time. And then the other issue that we've queued up for you tonight is the term "trigger height", which is the height at which a number of different things have to happen in the downtown zoning ordinance, specifically relating to the OLB Central and OLB South districts. That was a topic that came up at the September 5th meeting that we brought back for you this evening. So just real quick, in terms of timelines, this is the, I believe, the sixth meeting you've now had on a series of subjects. We've tried to outline those for you this evening. I talked about our hope is that if there's conclusion with the council tonight, we'll have the adoption for you at your next meeting. And so with that, I think we'll just jump right in, and I'll hand it off to Emile to start with the floor plate reduction discussion.
Okay, so the first topic we have tonight is the floor plate reduction in the two downtown MU districts, which are downtown MU and downtown MU Civic Center, as well as the two of the three downtown OLB districts, which are the Central and downtown OLB South. As Mac had stated, the trigger height is an important part of the code package. It's where, when developers do choose to exceed that trigger height, that it kicks in a reduced floor plate, as well as an open space provision. The planning commission recommended a range between 10% and 25% reduction for council to study and make a final decision for each of the zones. Just as a reminder, council provided earlier direction for a 15% reduction in the downtown O1 and O2 districts for non-residential, and a 10% reduction for residential in all zones. The options that we have up there on the screen, option one retains the planning commission and staff's recommendation for a 10% floor plate reduction for the zones in question. Option two includes a safe harbor, where when a development would be required to go below 20,000 square feet, it would kick in, so essentially we would not have any reductions below 20,000 square feet. This is important in the downtown MU and OLB, where the maximum floor plate above 80 feet is 20,000, so when you do have a 10% reduction, it takes you down to 18,000 square feet. And option three outlines an administrative departure provision, honing in on exemplary design, and it essentially says that the project would need to better meet the goals outlined in our downtown code design guidelines, and it talks about things like unique architectural features, or urban forms, design excellence, attractive rooftops, and generally contributing to a memorable skyline. So with that, we wanted to hand it over to council for discussion. We do have one slide that supplements information that we provided at the previous council meeting. So from the left going towards the right, we have examples of office projects in the 16,700 square foot range in Austin, all the way up to example projects in the greater than 20,000 square foot range, so we have 20,000 and 22,000 square foot examples. So this is just meant to show that there are viable feasible office developments of all sizes. Our economic development group, when we queried them, they said the range was generally 18 to 24,000 is feasible for downtown office projects.
Any questions, comments? Jennifer?
Well, I'll kick this off. And got an email an hour ago that didn't make it into the packet. Did you guys get that?
I just asked Sandy to make copies and bring it to us.
Okay, because it had some really good examples of buildings, all of which were about 24,000 square foot floor plates, and it was an email from...
Vulcan?
Yeah, from Vulcan, about the needs of the tech, saying that 20,000 is even too small, but 24,000 is what we needed. But nonetheless, that, I just want to make sure people see those visuals, maybe we can even put it up on the screen.
Okay.
But I had asked for this, I'd asked for the safe harbor because of the information we were getting from the industry. So I would very much like to see option two. I think last time we discussed this, there were three of us in that camp, and three not in that camp. So I just wanted to go on the record to say I'm still in that camp, I still think we should create that safe harbor, so that we can make sure that developers... Now, if people want to build something smaller, that's fine, but we wouldn't force that, because that way we won't force people to build things that aren't feasible for the market that we are in in Bellevue, for the office market. So, that's all.
So when you say "safe harbor," what does that mean to you?
To me, that means that they have reductions as it goes up, but that they won't have to reduce smaller than 20,000 square feet for non-residential, this only applies to office, or commercial, and they could keep the smallest floor plate size at 20,000 square foot feet.
You're not understanding what the... Why are you saying "safe harbor"? Safe harbor from what?
Safe harbor from having this... Well, I don't know if I came up with that verbiage, but it doesn't matter, it's just a description of a minimum that we won't force them to go below the 20,000 if they don't want to. And if they find that it would be cheaper for them to neck it in further and have a different design, they're free to do that, but we wouldn't force them to build something that wouldn't be what the market needs if they don't want to go below 20,000 square feet. And what we're hearing from the market is that especially for tech, 20,000's on the small side, and anything below that is too small. So I'm still in favor of option two, and would hope that we can resolve this tonight.
So it's either, I'm just wanting to make sure, it's 20,000, we're just saying it's 20,000, obviously people can go lower if they want to.
Yeah, yeah, that's why it's a safe harbor, we're not going to force them. And they can be wider below that, they have to still neck in, but we're not going to make them neck in below 20, that's all.
Yeah, so we're not forcing anyone to build smaller, because they can build, the trigger height kicks in when you trigger the incentive, right?
It kicks in when you exceed your current maximum building height.
Right, yes.
In most zones, except for...
So, you know, if it is a, to me, the thing is this, if it is, if you are developing a building and you don't want to go below 20,000, don't. But you develop to a certain height, and you're allowed to do that. If you want to develop to a height over that, then you need to drop down, and I think we're asking for actually a very small reduction by 10% on this. And I think this is something the planning commission dealt with, I'm good with their recommendation, I'm good with the staff recommendation on this, and I'll just leave it at that, that's where I remain.
Mayor?
I think Ernie's first.
Ernie?
So, just to see if we're all on the same page, option three to me is not really very viable, because I think that's too subjective. Just want to point that out, I'm assuming if I asked you about it, you'd say that'd be kind of hard to manage, and it would be one of those things where developers love flexibility, but on the other hand, they love certainty, and so they'd love to have the flexibility with the certainty of building whatever it is they want to build, so. I'm not a big player for three, just to be clear. With option two, you know, the problem I have is, I think Deputy Mayor Cholmanak just said it's a small reduction, and I agree with that, and that's one of those things that could be argued both ways. But I think we're kind of losing the point, which is we want buildings that are architecturally interesting. We want things that people will look at and go, wow, that's a cool skyline in Bellevue. And where I'm kind of coming down is, we want these buildings to be economically viable, we want them to fit the needs of the businesses that we're trying to attract to Bellevue, and for the most part, we're talking about high-tech types of companies. And we're trying to develop something that, on the outside, is interesting, and really, again, gets to that wow factor. Now, requiring developers to neck in the 10% above the trigger height, to me, does not ensure that we achieve that goal, you know, and sometimes I think you got to put aside the fear, or the suspicion, that if we don't necessarily tell the developers point by point exactly how things have to be done, we won't get what we want. Sometimes you have to give them the framework and believe that it's in their best interest to do things that are right for the city as well, and I know I've heard the arguments of, well, what about the carpetbaggers, the people who come in from outside the town, they'll build some tall rectangle and then take their money and move on? Sure, that's a possibility in life. You know, I've been around Bellevue long enough to know that there's a lot of local developers who stay and develop and do the right things, and so I do believe there is the possibility of someone coming and doing something that we just look at and say, wow, that's a nice, or... But I think the probability of that happening is small enough that it's not offset by asking for that additional 10% reduction, because the 10% reduction moves us away from what we're trying to achieve, and frankly, what the tenants are looking for in the buildings that they're going to be leasing here in the city of Bellevue. So to me, it's a fine line thing, but I don't know that the reduction really has as big a benefit as we hope it will, and I think the detrimental aspect to it could be worse than the benefit that we get to it.
So you're a safe harbor?
Yes, and, you know...
No, I just wanted to make sure that...
Yeah, I am, and, you know, I think I like the term "safe harbor," because as you pointed out, you're not required to not go below 20,000. If you want to develop something, and the upper floors are going to be less than 20, that's, I would see that as a developer's option and opportunity, we're just not going to force them to do that.
And I just want to say, that wasn't meaning to be in any way a comment on what you were doing, but one of the things the mayor and I will be driving for tonight is to make absolute clarity on what comes before us. So, thanks.
Well, just, and Lynn's next. On this, the reason I question the "safe harbor," I mean, why don't we just call it what it is and say...
No reduction.
20,000 square feet floor plates is the minimum, I mean maximum, or, I mean, you can do a 20,000 feet floor plate above that height.
There's no required step map?
There's no required step map.
But you can, so...
I'm sorry, before...
You can do it what you want to.
There's no requirement, 20,000...
You could put one with 10,000 square feet if you wanted to do it.
Anyway, it doesn't really matter.
I just don't think it makes sense to the public, that's all I'm saying, it's kind of weird. Anyhow, Lynn?
So I still have confidence with our staff and the designers, who in our city, that three to me is a good option. I mean, I'd love to see people not have to step back if they don't want to, or builders, but in exchange, we get a beautiful design, and I like the combination of one and three, because it gives you number two with a good design. So, if you, and that email that we got, that I was wondering if Sandy was going to bring us a copy of it, I thought that was a really good illustration of some design recommendations in order to achieve that freedom, and it's, I think it speaks to what Councilmember Robertson was saying as well, I don't know what you thought about it.
Yeah, I thought it was, I thought it really showed some beautiful buildings.
So would you, I mean, would you go with the combination of one and three, knowing that if it was a good design, you ultimately end up with two?
No, only because I think that it creates more uncertainty, and the one thing the development community definitely wants is certainty. I was going back to my old, oh, here, it's not my turn, I'll ask a question later.
All right, thank you.
So, okay.
But thank you for asking.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Conrad?
I would go for number two. Name doesn't matter anything, it's just a name, you know, it's confusing maybe, or maybe it isn't, but...
We can change the name.
Okay?
Let's say we can change the name.
I don't care, name's a name, you can call it, you know, the mayor's, ooh, whatever, that's a matter...
Okay, that sounds good.
Yeah, that's fine, we can use that, or Conrad Lees.
Okay, so you're one.
Go ahead, go ahead.
I go with number two, because...
Oh, I'm sorry, you're right, number two, number two, I apologize.
Number two?
Okay.
Okay. Any reduction will not go below 20,000 square feet floor plates, because I think our goal is to keep the buildings look different, variable, you know, iconic, and we're not going to do it, it's the developer that's going to do it. And they don't have to do anything if they don't want to, especially if they cannot do it economically, it's not going to happen. So they have to be economical, have to be feasible, they are the ones that's going to make it, and so ultimately, that's what will rest with them. And I believe that the 20,000 feet, something even bigger than that, is the feasible economic way to do that. We're no expert, they ultimately will do it. So I believe that, obviously, like somebody said, you know, could make it abuse the rule, whatever, but it could be done, anybody can, and we rely and depend on the developers. If it doesn't work well, it's not going to attract people to go there, you know, so it's a market, it's economics, it's developer, so I go with number two.
No, no, Mr. St... I had my say, I'm trying to get us to, where were we?
Well, but I won't, it's, we don't have to. So, I mean, I understand what, I mean, things have been said on all sides of it, yes, we could just say developers, this is your framework, and just, we hope you do good buildings, whatever, and if you don't, okay, it's okay, nobody will, you know, buy the building or move into it, but we're stuck with a building that's not, doesn't contribute to downtown livability look. I mean, this is a competing thing of what are we trying to reach here? And it is interesting in these floor plate examples, actually the two buildings, I mean, this is, the one in Austin's really cool, it's different. The other two, the Midtown and Madison, they're over 20,000 square feet, I guess, is that right, on each of the floor plates?
They are, they're roughly 20,000 and 22,000.
Yeah, 20, yeah. What we're trying to do is not make them, trying to get away from just having blocky buildings, although when you look out there, there are a lot of pretty interesting buildings, so that's what I'm struggling with, is how to, is, and it seems so arbitrary to 18 to 20, and I'm not sure what we're, what we're going to accomplish, I don't think we're very clear either way what we're really going to accomplish, and that's the dilemma. You have an insight on that?
Well, I have a question, because three years ago when we started this in the CAC, we talked a lot about how can we describe without prescribing what the city's goals for building and aesthetics are, how, what we want it to be like? So maybe Mac, or Emile, can you guys talk a little bit about what is in this already that kind of guides the developers into creating something that we truly are looking for in our city?
Right, so I think one part that's often forgotten is the tremendous amount of work the planning commission did on kind of updating the design guidelines, so those are the mechanism that we do administrative design review for pretty much every project in downtown. And when we started, they were kind of, they were in six or seven different places, they had been updated at various times over the past 35 years, so a nice body of work in the current code is the whole set of design guidelines that applies to all development, whether or not it's exceeding the trigger height or not. And it talks about interesting roof forms, about a lot of things on the pedestrian realm being livable and memorable, so those apply regardless of if you go over the trigger height or not. So I think we are going to get, continue to get good development downtown, and hopefully raise the bar for all development. The trigger height is really honing in on when we are allowing additional height in our downtown, which we are in, actually, most zones, what the trade-off is for that additional height. And the two things that both the CAC and the planning commission came up with were reduced floor plates, so having taller, more slender towers, and the ground level open space that the average person could enjoy. So really, that's what we're trying to continue the discussion, is what's the trade-off for the additional height?
And so as a developer or an architect, how would someone know what interesting roofline means to us in the city? What is in there that would lend them direction on how to come to that conclusion?
Carol, you want to take that one?
Sure. So some of the design guidelines speak directly to that. There are building design guidelines that speak to the base, the middle, and the top of the building. There are examples that are provided in the design guidelines, and as we have done with other provisions in the code, we also create public information that has examples as well, which may show towers, like some of the ones we've shown to you, or that are in the pictures that were sent by Vulcan earlier tonight, so that developers do have a target and an expectation about what we're trying to accomplish.
So final question, and I'll be done, I apologize. So if someone came and said, here's my building, and it was a rectangle, how would the city respond to that?
So the, I would say the skeleton of the building can't be taken in isolation, so a building that is a complete rectangle can be beautiful as a result of the fenestration, the material that is used, the, essentially, the type of window walls that are employed. So you can't just essentially say the skeleton is the only reason that makes design. In fact, the design guidelines focus more on materiality and the way the building is skinned than the actual metrics of the building. The metrics essentially try to get to the skeleton, so that we are trying to get buildings that are more slender, the design guidelines try to get to essentially what does the skin look like?
Thank you.
And how does it interface with the pedestrian?
Just real quick.
Yep.
Just another quick question. If a developer came in and designed a building to 20,000 square feet at the base, in other words, 20,000 square foot floor plates, they would just automatically be able to go higher at 20,000 square feet under number one, I'm sorry, under number two?
Above the trigger height.
Above the trigger height, correct.
Because of averaging.
Right. They'd be able to, it would just be a 20, it'd just be 20,000 all the way up. And that's just one of the reasons that I think having the 10% makes sense. I think, anyway, I've had my say, I'm just trying to get us to a number, and I've heard, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Yeah, Lynn?
So Jennifer, Councilmember Robertson, I keep referencing an email that was sent by Vulcan, and I'm just going to read a description of the land use codes that were utilized to create the design of Two Union Square, my favorite building in Seattle, and I knew the architect, and he didn't complain. Design tower to provide visual interest and articulation. Another one is create attractive building silhouettes and roof lines, and the third one was use architectural and landscape elements to emphasize gateways. So it's not really constraining, I think, and you came with a beautiful, up with a beautiful building that does not have any setbacks, and, you know, and there's six examples of land use codes used with six different, or seven different buildings around Seattle. So I do feel like it's not unreasonable to say, to encourage that type of design.
I have a question. I think that these, all these code sections are pulled from our code.
That's correct.
So, yeah, so what that tells...
So you're saying that that would inspire that type of design?
Yeah, even with the 20,000 foot safe harbor, I think that's the message that they're sending to us, because all these LUCs, that's the city's...
So all those are already in place?
These are all in the planning commission's recommendation.
These are all already in the...
Oh, well, okay then. But how do we, how do we encourage that type of design? What's the incentive for that? It's already there?
So everyone, as Emile was saying, all developers and all projects have to meet the requirements of the design guidelines through the administrative design review process.
Okay, so does that convert you to a option two?
A little bit. It's a good discussion.
Because as I count it, we're three, one, and one on option two, option one, and option three.
Which, where are you getting those?
I thought these were Seattle's land use codes.
No, 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 yeah, those are Bellevue design guidelines in the code, in the...
Yeah, I get what you're saying.
Is that the Vulcan memo?
Yeah.
Yeah, did you see it? Can you guys put that up?
No, let's just, let's have us take a look at it.
Okay.
I mean, this is really a big decision, and I think we need to, we need some time.
So what time did it come in? I'm having trouble.
It came in at 5:30.
Yeah, it was very late.
Thank you.
Didn't get a lot of time to...
Yeah, I just saw it when we sat down.
So how, on these two from Seattle, going back to ones you had, how did they end up with a building that had some interesting setbacks, and still do 22 or 20,000?
Are you looking at the graphic on the screen right now?
Yeah, yeah, the Midtown and Madison Center.
So these are, but we don't know what the floor plates these are.
It says it on the bottom, John.
20,000.
They're all 24.
24.
Okay, sure. So, well, to me, that argues for one and three.
So if we did one with, with this language incorporated, I mean, it's in there, but make it...
It seems like if you do one and three, it's not, it doesn't constrain you.
Well, you know, I guess I'll just comment on this. I do, I do find it interesting that all of these are larger floor plates, that if you took the 10% reduction, if I'm doing my math correctly, you wouldn't be below 20,000, because it'd be, or you'd be right at 20,000.
Yeah, this is more comparable to our O1, O2 discussion we had a few meetings ago, where our max is 24, even a 15% reduction.
And so this is where I'm getting into the issue of the smaller building, and the smaller floor plate. I just, like I say, I think what Councilmember Robbins... I just, like I say, I, I think what Councilmember Robinson suggested first, one, combine number one with the guidelines that we have that are in the proposed plan along with a statement that there can be a safe harbor for, or, or a, a, a way for a developer to keep at twenty thousand if that ten percent step back goes beyond that. But you really do have to have exceedingly interesting architecture. I do like a number of, of the buildings. I am not a fan of all of these buildings that I'm seeing here. And that's one of the reasons why I say that.
Mayor, can-
Yeah.
Since we're three, one, and one, could you share where you are on it? Maybe help us get to a decision?
Well, we may be at three and two.
We might be three and two. I wasn't sure what you, we're in option one or three?
Well, I'm not, I'm, I'm still trying to-
Option one, option three?
Look at that.
I'm in one and, one and three.
And I can do, and I, I'm fine to do one and three.
That would be three.
Which is three.
Which is-
Which is essentially, yeah.
Gives you a-
Well, no, no, one is the, one is the ten percent setback. So if you build a twenty thousand square foot base, you've got to take a ten percent setback.
Reduction.
Reduction, excuse me, unless you can show this exemplary, which is more than what our land use code. That means going beyond what the requirements of, of the code. That would be, and, but if you can do that, then you can stay at the twenty thousand. And I also think that there is an issue here. Again, we are raising heights. There are people who are looking at these heights, not from across the lake, not from the base of, of a building, but they are looking at it from their homes and their offices at the exact same height. So having those reductions at the higher levels does allow more light and space through.
So I'm, I'm a little bit confused on this Vulcan. They're, they're arguing for twenty-four thousand square feet is a minimum. That's, that's not, so it's not exactly relevant. I'm not quite sure how that helps. Carol, Erin, do you have something to say?
Yeah, so I, I'm not opposed to a combination of one and three. My concern is twofold. I think number three may create a hurdle that is unclearable. I mean, we've just spent three years defining what we want our downtown to look like as developers develop buildings. And I, I happen to be of the mind that we've put in a lot of work to clearly, or at least as clearly as possible, define what is truly outstanding architecture to start with. That's, we want every building to have outstanding architecture. And then so to say, you know what? If someone comes along with a truly outstanding architecture project, something that is truly iconic, well, that's kind of like a one in a hundred because we're already defining something that is supposed to look pretty darn good. And so I, I'm just concerned that if we say, you know, it has to be really outstanding without having a clear definition of that, because we've spent a lot of time defining, call it a minimum standard if you want, but it's a pretty high minimum standard in my book. And so we're already going to get good-looking buildings. And so to get a building that looks even better than the really good-looking buildings we're trying to get, again, I think that's a pretty high hurdle that is not easily cleared. I don't know it if there ever would be. And frankly, that's the one thing that holds me back from number three.
So to me, looking at the records of what we've done under the draft code, even with option two, there still would be a necking in at the first trigger height. And they also would be subject to FAR limitations. They would be subject to all the design guidelines, which, that Vulcan was arguing for bigger floor plates, but they also gave the examples of how some of these larger, beautiful buildings meet our design guidelines. So I think that it's still pertinent to this discussion. So from my perspective, I, I agree with Councilmember Semus about, you know, creating certainty. I think the intention of option three is good, but I think we have enough in our design guidelines already to make sure that we don't have ugly, blocky buildings. And so as we are sitting here at three, one, and one, or three and two, I would also refresh the council's memory that Councilmember Wallace, who is not conflicted out, he could come and participate, should he choose to, was an advocate for a twenty thousand square foot safe harbor. So that would put us at four council members, should he come and participate in this discreet decision at being there. And so to me, it makes sense for us to go ahead and move forward with the draft code, with the safe harbor. We have three council members who are firm on that, not three who are firm on the other options, and a fourth that could participate, who would be on the option two side. So I'd like to move on, on that with my colleagues' permission.
Well.
Just think about the argument.
I'm kind of sorry you introduced that because that has implications. That will, that's-
Yeah.
I'm just saying that, you know, there's someone we all, we all respect.
And also he, you have to also trust him.
I'm not saying he's going to. I'm saying-
That he, uh-
We should consider that since we're at a logjam point.
So he removed himself from the discussion.
Yeah.
Nobody asked him to leave.
For a reason.
Right, and he could come back in if he wanted to.
Okay, that didn't help.
I'm just-
Okay, I understand. I'm just saying it didn't help.
So unless you're prepared to make a choice today, Mr. Mayor, I think we are still kind of at loggerheads here.
May I ask staff a question? Can I just ask you a clarifying question? So, I mean, my goal in choosing three would be to give, to give developers more freedom in what they can design. Okay? So do you get that with number two, or do you get more of that with number three?
I want to take a, I'll take a big picture, answer that, and maybe I'll ask Carol to weigh in on what she sees day-to-day. There's a certain segment of developers that are really creative by nature, and they're coming in asking how they can create a really amazing building. There's also a certain segment of developers that I've run into in twenty years administering land use and zoning that ask, what is the base minimum I have to build to? And they expect to come in and they want to get a permit as quick as they can for that. And they view anything that is a roadblock to that as being government getting in the way. So government should set minimum expectations and that's it. So it's been my experience that most developers come in and start from a place of, this is what I have to do, right, they'll give me a permit. And they, they see anything else as moving back instead of the incentive that you're trying to describe. Well, you get this if you do the following things. They say, well, I already have that, and here it is. And then you're having a debate about what the staff think is excellent and what they think is excellent and how to apply these fine-grained details. And so, you know, the philosophical question for the council is how much discretion do you want put into that process? We can project to you, we have excellent staff that can work on those types of things, but it will add a level of uncertainty into a process. Is that fair?
That's a very fair assessment.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Sounds like we need to stew on that a little bit.
Yeah, and John, I'm just thinking we're at seven o'clock now and we've got another couple items. I think that will also have significant discussion. So that's why either if you have a choice to make, please. If not, I think we just need to keep moving and go to the next item. And I think we are at three and, yeah, I mean, I-
We're at three and two.
Three, two, and maybe one.
Decided. So could I just suggest then, because I do want to take action on this on the sixteenth, that it come forward with an option one and an option two alternatives inside the draft? And we can just cross out the wrong?
So I, I, I actually, this, this gets to just legislative procedure and the way we have always worked. If there is not a majority of the council that gives direction, it's the Planning Commission recommendation that comes to us. That's always been the way. And there's an option to change it. And I would, and I would be one hundred percent in favor of an amendment being drafted that would do precisely that to get to the safe harbor. I'd be a hundred percent in favor of an amendment being drafted that would get to one and three.
So the problem is there is no Planning Commission recommendation on this? So-
The Planning Commission recommendation was between ten and twenty-five.
They gave a range?
And I believe council has stated ten.
Yeah.
We, we did, we stated that.
We didn't make a decision on that, though, or we wouldn't be having this discussion today.
So should we go to twenty or twenty-five then?
Well, I think we gave them direction-
Darkness is not becoming.
To change it to the ten.
Trying to get the definition here.
I, I mean, that, I, you know, and so now we're not changing it. I, and it is the recommendation to be between ten and twenty-five.
They didn't have a clear recommendation on this. So I'd like to see language worked up to go either way. I think that that's the fair way to move it forward because we need to make a decision in two weeks.
So I'm looking at-
Especially when we have three people wanting the safe harbor, which is half.
Which is not a majority.
I know, but there's even fewer wanting option one.
I-
Or option three, so.
But the ten percent, ten percent, I'm sorry, a range, a step back, I always hate using whatever term is correct, but ten to twenty-five percent was the recommendation of the Planning Commission. So if we're going to do anything, we would come in with a ordinance, again, following the procedure we have always followed in the time that I've been on this council, it would come in with a range from ten to twenty-five and we would make the choice. I really thought I heard a majority of council members say it should be no more than ten.
That's right.
Which I believe was direction. However, everybody reserves the right to change their mind. I'm just trying to get a package before us that's manageable and doesn't have multiple, it has multiple amendments, but doesn't have ordinance two-six-four-three-A and two-six-four-three-B and two-six-four-three-C and two-six-four-three-D. I'm, that's what I'm really trying to avoid.
Conrad?
Let me see my piece. I think the council looked at ten to twenty-five percent, you're correct. But I think when we discussed that, we had a, also considered a condition based on the, you know, input we're hearing from the developers, that for this exceptions, we're not, we're going to keep the twenty thousand minimum floor plate.
No, that was not the discussion. And that's not what our staff heard.
That's what part of the conversation the council has developed since then. I mean, so I don't think, I don't know if I'm correct. I don't know whether the Planning Commission actually is, talk about this twenty thousand foot floor plate for this exception for downtown DTMU and all that stuff. Did it talk about that?
No, the Planning Commission was, no, they were fairly clear in the, they started with a ten percent reduction for everywhere and actually they were looking at going even more than ten percent and wanted the council to think about-
Right, but it's for the whole thing. But they did not spend time specifically talk about what council actually got talking about as the exception, the so-called harbor, safe harbor thing. So a safe harbor thing came afterwards.
The Planning, the Planning Commission specifically decided there would not be a safe harbor, that there would be a reduction of between ten and twenty-five percent. That was, let me, let me stop. Planning Commission doesn't decide anything. Planning Commission made a recommendation.
Exactly. So, but I just want to address, if you talk about Planning Commission, I just want to say, I don't think Planning Commission actually separate out this issue for this safe harbor exception. But as the council, I think we are where we are, so.
Well, they had a lot of discussion and it's kind of neither here nor there. Their recommendation is the ten percent reduction above the trigger height, and that's one option. And whoever came up with the, even if it was discussed, it's irrelevant because we can look at it anyhow, so. Okay, let's move on to the other for right now. Floor plate examples, I mean, the trigger height.
Okay, topic two is the trigger height in the OLB Central and OLB South. So this is the area between one hundred and twelfth Avenue and I-405, between Main Street and Northeast Eighth Street. There's two zones there. And the staff and Planning Commission recommendations are consistent. They're a hundred and fifteen feet as the non-residential trigger height. And it was asked at the September eighteenth council meeting that we bring back for discussion, a concept that raises that same trigger height to one hundred and fifty feet. So we're here bringing that back for your discussion. We do have a few slides that we can show you for a little bit more context. We discussed this a bit earlier tonight, but the trigger heights, just as a reminder, are for the rest of downtown set at the maximum achievable building height. In the OLB zones, they were actually raised, recommended to be raised by the Planning Commission from eighty-seven feet, which is essentially what you can do under current adopted zoning, to one hundred and fifteen feet, which is consistent with the, the downtown MU and MU Civic Center Zone, which are directly west across the street. So the thought that there should be some consistency with the, the trigger heights in those two zones that are directly across the street there. And again, the trigger height in this area was, if a developer chose to exceed that trigger height, that we would have taller, more slender buildings and, and ground level open space. Let me just do it.
Okay.
This is just a, a quick graphic to show the, the changes. This, this was one of the, the areas that clearly is adjacent to our new light rail stations and did have the fairly significant increases in FAR in height from maxes of three to five and six from an FAR perspective. And height increases there, as you can see, from in the eighty-seven foot range up to two hundred and thirty and four hundred feet, not necessarily as goals, but maximum heights that you could do down in that area. Just a couple more graphics. And this is, on the left-hand side, you can see in a kind of a conceptual framework here when you have a trigger height at a hundred and fifteen feet and were to do a hundred and fifty-foot tall office buildings over a podium, then you would have these different reductions in floor plate that are shown down there in the lower left as well as the ground level open space. If you were to have the same height buildings, that is, a hundred and fifty feet at a five FAR, there is the potential to, to not have the open space requirement triggered and, and have potentially thirty thousand and twenty thou, twenty-five thousand square foot floor plates going up to the hundred and fifty foot level. So again, the Planning Commission staff recommendation on the, the left, what would be up for discussion on the, on the right. Got two more. And then these are zoomed out a little bit, but it, it essentially shows that Main Street and Northeast Fourth area with the graphics that we just showed. Clearly, this is contemplating two office towers per block, maxing out the FAR, again, with the trigger height one fifteen, one fifty. And then we just have one more graphic, Carol. And this is zoomed out a little bit from roughly Northeast Fourth, approximately looking back towards Main Street and Northeast Sixth, so that same OLB area. That's good. You may want to go back to the options. So Mayor, with that, we can turn it over to, to you and the council for discussion.
Okay.
All right, so the last time we all had pretty much agreed on one and one council member requested an option, which is number two. And that would, I mean, there would be one, pass the put-in, be one step back and then it would go on up. And it would not have the potential for the open space at the ground level. Any comments, Erin?
I'm, I'm comfortable retaining option one.
Then?
Is it possible to ask for fee and lieu for affordable housing if we were to, for somebody to be able to increase the non-residential trigger height as an incentive?
So that is possible. What we talked about with respect to affordable housing was we calibrated it to allow an FAR exemption. And remember, we also talked about the fact that we would be doing additional affordable housing strategy work later and that if we wanted to come back at a future date and refine the recommendation at that point in time based on more holistic approach citywide, we would be doing it then.
Okay, I like that.
Thank you.
Okay.
So I just, I'm, I'm one. There is one situation in here that I think we might want to come back to later. There might be two situations. And that is something that is triggered. Councilmember Robinson just brought this up. Councilmember Robinson just brought this up, but it might not be affordable housing, but something that is a public benefit that might be able to allow for some form of exemption to this or some form of different treatment on it. I will say I sit on the Maidenbauer Board. And so, you know, we are very interested in a headquarters hotel. There are hotels in projects that are planned to the west of the, of the center. There's been discussion in, in here about a hotel project that would actually potentially connect. And I'd be willing at some point in time to consider some, some adjustments for a project that does that. But frankly, again, I think when you look at the graphics that you showed us, you know, I go back to the build the wall chant. This is, we do not want to have that section basically walled off and blocking the rest of downtown Bellevue.
And I asked for this. I appreciate the graphics, and I'm okay to go ahead and stay with, seems like the council supports the current direction. I'm okay to stay with that.
Okay. You want to make that motion?
Do we want a motion? Or is that just a, is, is? I mean, if anybody else wants to say no, I think we only heard from a couple of people.
I think we've heard from three for option one.
So you're comfortable with just a heads up?
Yeah, thumbs up if they.
That's fine.
Just make sure.
Okay.
I'm for one. I'm fine.
Okay, that's four.
Councilmember Lee?
I'm good.
Okay.
Okay. All right. That's that.
All right, this-ish topic came up on September eighteen, I believe. And the council did ask some questions with regard to the linear buffer. Although the question was answered, for the most part, it did cause staff to go back and look at the linear buffer quite carefully and how we had crafted the regulations that essentially describe how the linear buffer needs to be developed. As part of that, we did find that there was potentially an unintended consequence regarding the way that we had drafted the planning commission recommendation for your consideration. And so the current code version, as you know, measures from the back of curb in perimeter district overlay A two, and it measures from the back of sidewalk in A one. The problem with the measurement of the back, at the back of curb without doing some additional cleanup in that section is that there was also a hardscape limitation. And once the sidewalk is located within the linear buffer, it exceeds the hardscape limitation. As a result, staff is recommending some modifications to achieve the intended outcome that was recommended by the planning commission to essentially eliminate the hardscape provision from the areas of the linear buffer where we measure from the back of curb, so.
I believe I was the one that raised this question. We had a very good discussion, Ms. Helen and I. And I actually, I was really thinking more in terms of the buffer that is just south of Northeast Eight. But having that discussion, having these changes, understanding the properties that are there, I'm, I'm good with the way it was drafted.
Number two.
So number one?
Okay.
So we actually, the, in this case, we're suggesting a modification.
Modifications, yeah. It's with the modifications. They, I mean, I think it's really great that they went back and looked at it because they found something that was just, I mean, frankly, was an oversight. So make those changes.
Okay.
So I was really confused by this. So does then, option two, it creates all this, the policy intent of the planning commission recommendation, but it takes away an inconsistency with regard to the hardscape limits? Is that what it is?
That's correct.
So, okay, then I'm good with option two.
And it actually makes a clarification for how that setback is measured. So it's very clear that the setback in the A two area, which is identified in blue, is measured from the back of curb. And the setback from, in the A one area is measured from the back of the sidewalk.
Okay, and that's what the planning commission recommended? Because they looked at this really?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, I'm okay with the two.
Okay, we all okay with two?
Yep.
Yep.
Yes.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Nope.
No, I'm, I'm okay. I would just like to ask a clarifying question because planning commission looked at a lot of stuff. And I just would ask everyone to go kind of back and ask the question of, how did this not get caught until it got to this point? Because, you know, we're relying a lot on the planning commission to have vetted all this stuff as well as staff. And then there's the old thing about it gets past a commission and then staff changes something. And yes, even if we all agree, I just want to make sure people don't feel like, well, you know, planning commission did something, then staff came and changed it. And then we looked at it and said, yeah, that's, that's cool. Planning commission, this should have gotten caught a lot earlier. And I, I hope you folks kind of go back and ask, how could we have caught this earlier? And made sure that it got resolved with the planning commission's endorsement.
Sure. We, and this came at the very end. If you remember, the planning commission was driving towards a date to get you a recommendation. And this came at the very end, and they requested that we incorporate some changes that had been specifically requested. And we incorporated those changes that were requested by some stakeholders. And the stakeholders hadn't caught those changes either. And we essentially incorporated that, made it final. And we have gone back with a fine-tooth comb since that time and as a part of this process. And that is the only location that we found, okay, we created, the stakeholder, even the stakeholders didn't recognize it. They recommended a change, and we were essentially trying to fix that.
Thank you for that explanation.
Proof that there are no stupid council questions.
So last top, oh, last topic is the residential tower setbacks, similar to the, the topic with respect to raising the trigger height. This one was one that was requested by one council member to come back for additional discussion. The prior direction that we received from the city council was to instate, reinstate the planning commission recommendation of twenty feet foot setbacks for the towers from interior property lines on residential. If you remember, there was some consideration by the council to go to thirty feet, and then the twenty-foot interior property line setback was reinstated for non-residential, for residential towers. So the option for council consideration that was requested by a council member was that the thirty-foot setback from interior property lines apply above eighty feet for residential towers. But then there's the ability to reduce to a minimum of twenty feet if certain departure criteria are met.
Lynn?
I will speak to that since this was my idea. I, you know, we have a lot of developers in the room who live with their work. And I have no doubt that they would do what we call the right thing, is create as much separation and design as possible to give, make a very good product. But if you look at ownership of property downtown, there is a lot of foreign investment. And there's just no indicator to me that people are going to do anything other than build the maximum for the least amount of money in that situation. And I'm really trying to create living situations that are going to be desirable for people. We, because as we grow, there's going to be more people moving out of single-family homes into downtown and more people moving into downtown. So that is my, my goal in, in doing this. But I think it also offers the flexibility that if you can't do it, then you don't have to. If it's, if it's a property that doesn't allow for a thirty-foot setback, tower setback, then you don't have to do it. So I, I like this.
Councilmember Lee? Yeah, Lee.
I just have a clarification for Councilmember Robinson. She mentioned that she's concerned about foreign investment with no consideration of how we live here. I think that we need to be careful, that we are clear in what we mean. I don't think we can differentiate, you know, foreign investment period as to their respect for quality of life in the city of Bellevue.
That's not exactly what I said, but.
Good, I just want to be clear. That's what I heard.
No, thank you.
I think she was including California in that as well.
Well, given that.
I, I actually, I actually agree. It's not necessarily where the investment comes from. It is the investor. And I also agree that we've got people who have done magnificent development here in Bellevue, and that they want to do that. And they most likely have used money from all over the world to do that.
Yeah, money is all green, there's no boundary. We are the ones that are responsible. That's why we are here, to make sure that it's done right. We need to do our education, our rules set.
Well, I, I think it's that balance. We like to talk about, we have a lot of local developers, and they're very committed to making this a livable city. And obviously, we can't really peg every human being in a certain way. You're going to have a mix. And we had, we have a really neat development going up close to here that's somebody from Canada, and they seem to be doing a really great job, so. It's just, just hard to make those judgments on that based on where they come from. It's, we're just trying to, so that every developer has a good sense of what we want, and that's the whole point of the downtown livability piece, and have some guidelines. So the question is, so what does this really mean? This, this option of thirty-foot setback above eighty feet, reduced to twenty feet? And how would that play out? How many, how many properties are we talking about? Is this going to result in most of the setbacks being thirty feet, the sixty total, or just some? What, what? To me, it's just purely amorphous in terms of what we're doing, unless we all went out and looked at everything out in the city and made some judgment on that.
So this, the objective of this change was to start at thirty feet for residential buildings. I don't want to put words in Councilmember Robinson's mouth, but I think the objective was to create some space and privacy for residents, living in residential buildings. So it was to put those towers farther away from the interior property lines. And as, and essentially, the provision, as it's written now, says you start at thirty feet from the interior property line, but you have the ability to reduce down to twenty feet if there are circumstances that demonstrate that that light and privacy will be achieved in another way, such as turning the building, offsetting the building from a building that's across the property line from the place that you're developing, or maybe creating a curvilinear building so that there aren't direct lines of sight between buildings, between residential towers.
So we would be more prescriptive then on the design?
There are, we would be more prescriptive on the things that would allow the departure in order to create private, to maintain the privacy objectives.
Okay. And that's all above, above the eighty feet?
That's correct.
Okay. So we're trying to decide a subjective factor of what privacy is.
So I heard last, I forget when we last discussed this, last discussing it, I heard four people on this council very much in favor of keeping the forty.
Right.
I was supportive of, I'm supportive of Councilmember Robinson's idea on here. As you know, I've brought forward a couple of different proposals. This is a little bit of a hybrid of one of the ones that I talked about with staff. But if there are four votes that are for the forty, are the forty feet, the twenty-twenty, then we ought to, and that is the planning commission recommendation, then we ought to just tell them that and move it forward.
Okay, Jennifer?
Yeah, I'm in favor of, I, I, I like the idea. Thank you for bringing it forward. I think it was very well drafted as far as the code option. But I was comfortable with the planning commission recommendation, and so I'm still on option one. Thanks.
Okay. Ernie, same thing? Conrad?
My name is Conrad.
Oh, I know.
I'm still on option one.
I'm watching the hands. Go ahead.
He said number one.
He said option one.
Number one, all right, so I'll just say it.
The reason, I, I respect the, the privacy thing, you know, Councilmember Robinson and, and Mayor. But I think there's, I hope that this opportunity is staff. If it gets, if we follow twenty-foot setback, if it doesn't work, doesn't work right. Number two, I think the developer should be smart enough not to develop that kind of buildings. And if they don't, maybe we can make suggestions. They can create more privacy space, like you suggested. They don't face each other. They face different angles and whatnot. I don't know whether we have any leverage to do that, but maybe, there may be some considerations.
This is the leverage.
No, no, no. I'd rather do the other way rather than make it tougher than that. Or I'd rather make it right, feasible, and then have special consideration, because special situations. It's just the other way around. Very different when you approach things differently.
Good. Yeah, Ernie?
So I'm actually okay with number one, but I do have a question in regards to the number two because it's, to me, it's an intriguing concept. And I'm all for creating more, more privacy, more intimate feeling in these buildings, if at all possible. So my question is, is this, if, if we went with number one, with the twenty-foot setback, why can't our codes already describe the things that we're talking about that need to be done in order to go from thirty to twenty? Because if those are good, sound practices, shouldn't we have those in our codes at twenty feet?
You're referencing the design?
Well, number two, it says, you know, you can go to twenty feet with departure from criteria. And Helen was talking about curvilinear buildings, how you position them and stuff. So basically, what we're saying is, if we chose number two, you could still end up with buildings twenty feet off the interior lines, provided they met certain criteria. So if that criteria truly is, you know, first-class design standards, shouldn't we be looking at incorporating, incorporating that into our codes and allow people to build at twenty feet, but require them to use those techniques?
That would be an option. It would be a requirement that would, it would drive form of residential towers. So a little bit more so than our regulate, than our design guidelines currently.
Would that drive significantly cost?
That would, well, that depends on a lot of factors.
Yeah, just general conversation. I'm sure we'll hear more.
My suspicion is, it is always going to be more cost-effective to build a square or rectangular building than something that is curvilinear. And it is always going to be more cost-effective to build it without setbacks or setbacks, so.
Chris, and this is, this is, I mean, it's a good discussion. It's a long discussion. And I think to some extent, the planning commission talked about this. I have some concerns along those lines of, the last one here, it doesn't, when you start talking about it doesn't affect light, air, and privacy of users, proposed towers, that's, that's the eye of the beholder on that one. I, I think what you're talking about is something we need to, we can work on. How you get there is another question. And that would take us going back probably to the planning commission and having a whole discussion back and forth. But we do have some buildings that are being put up or already put up now that are actually pretty cool and curvilinear or have different sides on the thing. So part of it's just, again, in having the expectations. And I think with the department working with them on the plans, encourage people to do something that's going to be attractive. And the more attractive buildings they have, the fewer people will build just blocks, I think. So this is, again, if we're in a perfect world and we just dictate everything we thought was the wisest, that would be easy, but we're not. But I am ready to vote for number one as well. Go number one.
Okay, that is. That is, that's four.
So, that would be, that's three, or?
That was four for number one.
Okay, I wasn't sure quite, okay. That, and so, off it goes.
So, based on my notes, we have the, we have a final decision on items two through four, that we had a conversation on this evening. My, our probably follow-up question that will help us deliver on your expectations in the best way would be for you to let us know, on number one, what you would expect to see on the sixteenth, so that we can provide that to you for your final approval. So, that gets to, is, are either making a decision on item one, or essentially giving us some direction as to whether you would like to see different ordinances, an ordinance version A and an ordinance version B.
Right.
With that distinction identified, which is the, the one I'm talking about, is the building floor plate reduction.
Well, I think, I think if we wanna get to the decision, that's what we're gonna need to do. Instead of going to sixteenth and then still saying, come back again with the final, give us some options. Is that the wish of the council?
That's the only difference, right? That's the only open issue? That's true. So, we could have two versions of the ordinance, with just that change.
Right.
Correct. Yeah, to me, that seems like the way to go.
That's good. Let's do that. John?
You know what? If that's the only open issue, and there could, as we all know, there may be more. I mean, we had an email come in at five forty tonight, that let us down, and we've got a couple of weeks to go. I just think it's a, it's a matter of, I, I would hope that we could get to a point where a majority of us could be in a position where they could vote for, this is a, but I have to say, this is a very strong position for me. So, I, you know what, at this point, I would say, you can have two different ordinances. I would prefer the opposite way of doing that, of basically having an ordinance that is closer to what the planning commission recommended to us, with the minimum step back of ten percent, and an amendment to add to it. But that's...
Sounds like it was interesting having two.
What's that?
I'd prefer to have the two separate, since there's only one open issue, to have two ordinances, an A and a B.
Well, either way, we, we're gonna resolve it next time. Let's, let's, let's just go, we have these, the other three clear, ready to go.
You know what, just do it, just do it that way. Do it that way, we don't typically do it that way, but do it that way, and I think that that's fine. The problem with doing it that way is, for people who, this is a major issue for them, they have to vote against the ordinance, not against the issue. And the only reason we have to do that, I mean, John, I just, I just truly wish, I mean, I just wish you could make up your mind on this, and just go one way or the other. And I'm fine.
Well, I wish some other people would make up their mind in a different way, so. I, John, I, I understand what you're saying, but I, I, I still have some questions. This is a, this is a huge decision, and I don't think there's anything wrong, you take another week in coming back on this, and we'll go forward. I mean, I could say something now, and then come back next week, I guess, and argue on the other side, I don't know.
So, could you clarify, what are the two ordinances going to be?
So, it would be ordinance two, four, five, six, A, which would have ten percent, and ordinance two, four, five, six, B, which would have two, the two thousand, or the twenty thousand square foot, would, that that would be the, the, the maximum that you would have to step back to, and those would be the two ordinances. The problem with that is, if that second one is, if you get into this, you get into where we look the worst, which is by, especially because we're in six people, where somebody is making a motion to put in ordinance A before the council, then you have a substitute to do B, then you have a sub-sub-substitute to do C, and you just are, you're, you're looking awful, and you're essentially saying yes or no to this. So, if it is a big deal for you, the only way you can vote is no, if that ordinance comes in, and you're voting no on the entire package. And that's why I believe you would be, we would be better off by coming back, Mr. Stokes has not made his decision, and I respect that, and he needs time, and this is a big decision, but this is the way legislation gets legislated. And, you know, we can, and we can take a vote on both, and if we're at three-three, maybe the deal is, we go back and, and try to work something else out. But I just, I find it very difficult to be put into a position where, because one part of the ordinance is something that I disagree with, or one part of the ordinance is something that Councilmember Robertson disagrees with, the only way they can voice that disapproval is by a no vote on the ninety-nine percent of the ordinance that has been agreed to. I have issues with, with, with the whole process, but I've said before, I wanna go ahead and vote for it.
But, but, but something, is that, go ahead.
What I was gonna say is, another alternative, which might make both sides happy, is to, and hear me out, all the way, is to have it written with the safe harbor in it, because all that has to be is crossed out.
No, no, we don't have the votes for it, Councilmember. I mean, I'm sorry. See, this, this, I'm just gonna call it.
Let's just have two.
This is the problem, we're gonna, one side wants to have theirs put forward first, and then somebody has to amend it, and the other side wants the reverse. So, we, we actually do sometimes have two separate ordinances come forth, and we choose one or the other, and you just vote against it, but you're, you're just voting because of peace on it, absolutely, and then you vote for it because of the peace on the other. I don't see that's any problem. We're just gonna come up and, same thing we were doing right here. People say, some people said, I want two, some people said, I want one, some people said, I want three. It's the same ordinance, just different language in the operative part, so I, let's...
So, we're, is that bringing back two?
Bringing back two.
Does that wish the council?
I agree with the mayor.
Me too.
Clarifying questions, please.
Yes.
So, is the question of being at eighteen and working your way to twenty with exemplary design or some other option, that is not enumerated in either of those options, correct?
I have no problem with putting, with having staff come up with even a third option, which is the departure from reduction, and see how that would work. I have, I have no problem with, we haven't decided on, we haven't decided on these yet.
Yeah, we could do that.
Well, 'cause, you know, I, I'm comfortable with twenty thousand. The real question is, how do we make it work? And, so I'm open to exploring options in that over the next week.
So, is there a desire to have a third version?
We're looking for, we're looking for direction.
If you're gonna have a third version, it would take another month, because we'll be hearing from a lot of people. I'll be spending the next few weeks.
I agree.
No, no. If you wanna do that, I'm open.
The problem with three is that we don't have any, I mean, we don't, we're not ready to come up with what that means in terms of exemplary design that better meets the goals and all that. I mean, that's, that's the only concern I have, that's amorphous.
And I agree with...
Staff, speak to that, please.
Yeah, sure.
Is that, is that a fact?
We've got time, go ahead.
What are your thoughts?
Well, I'll give you some big picture thoughts, and Carol can speak to some of the things she's already drafted for you. If there's a desire from the council to see an option that tries to get as specific as possible for what exemplary design means, we can certainly spend some time and bring you back some alternative language that would contemplate that. And we can spend some time refining what Ms. Helen has already spent time working on, to see if that satisfies your needs, if that's a desire of the council to consider that, continue, I should say, that, that dialogue.
I'd be up for that. My suggestion is that you, it sounds like you have two very strong votes for one and two, and some, some interest in three. Our, my concern is, is that without a couple of options for you to decide from, we may be having this conversation again on the sixteenth, and then we will be having it again in November. I know everyone is interested in being done. So, with that in mind, the two options, there are two options before you, to create two different ordinances, or to create an ordinance, basically with the, the planning commission recommendation and amending language. So, those are kind of the two options at this point. The amending language would be safe harbor, which adds a line, and we can do that. So, those are kind of the two options of what we can bring to you on the sixteenth, for you to vote on. I think if we start drafting additional language, thinking again, we would get into another situation where we would have more language that you would want to see again, and we've essentially determined we'll go two weeks out again. One thing I would just like you to keep in mind, the planning commission had a lot of discussion about making sure we adaptively manage, that we come back and we think about what the design is that we're getting downtown, that we want, and staff has an interest as well as watching and paying attention to the types of outcomes that we get. And then coming back and routinely thinking about those options, and talking about whether the options are achieving the objectives that you adopted. And if that's the case, we can come back and do some refinement, if we're not getting exactly what we adopted. So, there is an opportunity for us to pay attention, think about these things that were important to you, and see if we're getting those things that are important to you or not, and then coming back and making a change. So, I would recommend tonight, given the conversation that's happened on all of these topics, that you give staff direction as to whether you would rather see two ordinances, or rather you would rather see a single ordinance that has your direction on the three topics from tonight, the planning commission's recommendation, and a amending language to that recommendation. And then we can make that so for the sixteenth.
So, let me just suggest this. I prefer what the latter, I think others prefer the double ordinance. There's another option. That's to not have the language in the ordinance, and then you, so the language developing this would not be in the ordinance that would be developed, but there would be three separate sections that would put that language into the ordinance, and we can have individual votes on that.
So, you're saying, let's, we would adopt the ordinance versus, and take out the substance of it?
No, 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 John, please.
I'm trying to understand.
Okay, yes, I understand. I, I, I understand.
I'm trying to understand.
What's that?
I understand, and I could go and try to explain it, I think that's a great idea, actually.
Okay, so, 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 the language regarding floor plate reduction for non-residential would be excised from the ordinances that are put before us, or the single ordinance that's put before us, because there is only one idea, and then we would take votes on these versions. And I'm, you know, my pref, so, on, on the, on the three versions, and that would then, that, that vote would be essentially a vote to add that section or that language to the final adopted ordinance, it's right there before us. And if we're in a situation where it's three to three, and, and three to three, if, let's just say, somebody votes for number one, and it only gets three votes, it's not in. Somebody puts safe harbor in front of us, it only gets three votes, it's not in. Somebody puts departure from reduction, or whatever the combination in, it only gets three votes, it's not in, and we have to solve it. I mean, the problem is, and I believe that we can come to a place where there's, where it's solvable, and I want this done, and then if not, I mean, we're just gonna have to, at, at that point, it kind of becomes, someone's gonna give.
We're gonna get there, and however you wanna set it up...
I'm okay with that. It'd be weird, oh, sorry.
So, she had asked to speak, that's all.
That's okay. And I'm okay to have, let me just say this, I'm okay to have the two alternatives, which is what I was supportive of. This would be a little unusual to have a section of code, I can't remember, because I closed my laptop, whatever it is, twenty, whatever, of, and to have it say TBD or something in the ordinance, and then in the council packet, it would say, section blah, 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 option one, option two, option three. So, then the process, as I would understand it, is someone would move the option of ordinance, you know, seventeen fifty-six, whatever the number is, with option A, or they could just move the ordinance, and then I move to amend it by adding option A. It's just a two-step process, rather than try to see who gets called on first to move the first ordinance. And I wasn't trying to have gamesmanship on the, I just didn't wanna have a default where if we tied, it would go forward with one or the other. So, I think we should get, need to get to a decision. So, I'm okay with that, as long, and then I would expect that staff would have the ordinance printed, not in the packet, but with all three options, so that whatever we pass that night, the mayor can sign the one that we adopted.
Right. That's exactly what I was saying, that what we're gonna do, if you're putting the substance, the substantive operative pieces are left out, you put the language in the ordinance, and you substitute that, and that's what I said, and then we've taken five or ten minutes to discuss whether that was what was in there. And, and if you wanna put three in there, fine, whatever, and it doesn't matter who comes up first.
Okay, right, that's what I'm, yeah.
You know, we're gonna vote on what, we're gonna vote on what we want. It's not gonna be gamesmanship with who puts the first one up, so we'll just go A, B, C, the way it is now.
So, is it clear to the staff, can you explain what we're gonna do?
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Yeah, that'll be fine. Fewer pages to print.
Chris, make the decision. Councilmember.
That's great, good, good solution.
All right, anything else? That's it, all right. We adjourn to, and we'll have a recess until the regular session in council chambers. Okay, good evening. I called the order of the regular session of Bellevue City Council for Monday, the twenty, second of October already, two thousand seventeen. Our first item of business is item two, roll call and flag salute.
Mayor Stokes.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Chelmanak.
Here.
Councilmember Lee.
Here.
Councilmember Robertson.
Present.
Councilmember Robinson.
Here.
Councilmember Seamus.
Here.
Councilmember Wallace.
Here. Okay, Councilmember Lee, would you please lead us in the flag salute this evening?
Please rise. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual, liberty, and justice for all.
Okay, before we move forward, I'm gonna ask Deputy Mayor Chelmanak to make a couple comments, and in honor of, well, in, John, on, related to Las Vegas.
So, this morning, I know was a tough morning for all of us. I have a habit of waking up in the morning and checking my Twitter feed very early. It's also the way I shut off my alarm clock, and usually, it's just full of political news. And when I opened it this morning, I just saw a number of tweets about Las Vegas, and I knew again that something had gone terribly wrong, and it did. I know when we came in tonight, the death toll was at fifty-nine, and there were more than four hundred people who were injured. I heard an interview tonight, or this afternoon, from someone who was part of the, the band or the, the music that was playing there, and he said something that, that really stuck with me. It is really sad that it takes the worst in America to bring out the best in America. And I thought that was very poignant. So, I know that our hearts, our prayers, our thoughts are with all of the victims in Las Vegas, also with those who were the first responders, who did, if you've heard any of the coverage, did a most remarkable job of recovering to an almost impossible and unthinkable situation. So, again, I know, I think I speak for everybody in this room, that our hearts and prayers go out to all of those families and all of the people in Nevada.
Okay, with that, we have a proclamation, October the fourth, two thousand seventeen, is International Walk to School Day. And looks like we have somebody who walks to school maybe, sometimes? There you go, okay. This year is the fifteenth year the city has participated in the event, and ten schools are joining us for two thousand seventeen, including Ardmore, Bennett, Clyde Hill, Lake Hills, Medina, Newport Heights, Phantom Lakes, Somerset, and Sunset, and Woodridge. We're joined this evening by representatives from the schools, and I'm going to invite the group up following the proclamation. I'll ask Janine Thorne, a PTSA member and lead parent volunteer for Walk to School I'll ask Janine Thorne, a PTA member and lead parent volunteer for Walk to School Day for Ardmore Elementary, to introduce the students in attendance. So I'll go ahead and read the proclamation, and then we can come up and get some pictures, and I have a copy of the proclamation for everybody here, copies. Okay, City of Bellevue, Washington, proclamation, whereas all children benefit when communities take steps to make pedestrian safety a priority, and whereas, physical activity plays a leading role in reducing the rates of obesity, diabetes, and other health problems among children, and being able to walk or bicycle to school offers an opportunity to build activity into daily routines, and whereas, an important role for parents and caregivers is to teach children about pedestrian safety and the health benefits related to physical activity, and whereas, community members and leaders should continue to improve the ability of children to walk, safely walk and bicycle in Bellevue to get to school, to the park, and visit friends. And whereas, walking and bicycling as modes of transportation can relieve traffic congestion and other environmental benefits, and whereas, children, parents, and community leaders around the world are joining together to walk to school and improve walking and bicycling conditions in their communities, now therefore, I, John Stokes, mayor, and on behalf of the City, Bellevue City Council, do hereby proclaim the day of October the fourth, two thousand seventeen, as International Walk to School Day in Bellevue, and encourage everyone to consider the safety and health of our children today and every day. And I do wanna say that, one of the things that we talked about this before, and we, we actually passed a levy that is connected with this in terms of connectivity and transportation connectivity in the, in the neighborhoods, and improvement of sidewalks, and bike trails, and other things that will help with having this proclamation actually be an active proposition. So, and thank you very much, everybody, for doing that. And I'd like those who are here to come up, and we will present the certificates. Yeah, let's go out and, we'll take the pictures with everybody soon.
This is an exciting time. We enjoy the opportunity to come before you, and thank you again for the proclamation. And I can tell all the, and my name is Janine Thorne. I am a PTA, I am the chairperson for this event at the Ardmore Elementary School. J.J. Cadis is our president, and our elementary school principal is Chaz Miller. And I can tell you why I think it's such a great day, but it's not about me, we've got students here that would like to tell you why. So I'm gonna introduce Pierce Thorne first, and he's gonna come up, and then followed by one of the other students from Somerset.
Okay. My name is Pierce, I'm in fourth grade, and I go to Ardmore Elementary, and I think Walk to School Day is important because, Walk to School Day is important because you have to get exercise. It's important because while you are exercise, exercising or walking, you can lose weight and stay strong.
Thank you. My name is Ruchan. This is Victor, and this is Lucy. We, all three of us go to Somerset, Somerset Elementary. Walk to school is great because you will get lots of exercise for your body and your legs by walking. You can also have a chance to say good morning to everyone instead of waiting till you get to school. After you are done walking to school and have gotten there, you will feel happy and accomplished with what you have finished, and you can relax. It also saves energy from the bus drivers that work every day. Walking to school is so fun.
A simple thanks again, and everyone, walk with us on this day.
All right, thank you. Okay, next we have the approval of tonight's agenda. Is there a motion for approval?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion's been made in second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. At this time, we will take written and oral communications from the community. Normal rules, the length of time allocated oral communications is set at thirty minutes. There's a three-minute limit for speaker, regardless of whether you're speaking on your own behalf or representing a group. A maximum of three persons are permitted to speak to each side of any one topic. And speakers are asked to begin their comments by identifying themselves and their address on the record. And remember, the green light comes on, yellow light when you have a minute left, and red light comes on, that's it, next person up. Thank you. City Clerk, will you please call the name of your first speaker?
Yes, Mayor Stokes, and we have four individuals signed up to speak tonight, first being Lyndon O'Havick.
Before we get going, I think someone that just left left something in the front row.
Oh, yeah.
Maybe we could send someone out to grab them? Oh, that's yours? Oh, okay, sorry, I thought that they, I thought they left.
Stop them.
Should hire the kids to come up here. Lyndon O'Havick, my address is on record. Good evening, City Council members and Mayor Stokes. Absent from the, pardon?
Raise the microphone up.
Oh, yeah. Absent from the crowd this evening is one of our most dedicated, formidable, and outspoken East Gate residents, Michelle Wannamaker. We are hopeful her return will be sooner than later, but due to significant injuries she sustained from a fall in her home, she has been out of commission since July. Michelle was only just released from the convalescence center after surgery on her ankle, and it kept her immobile. She will begin rehabilitation and physical therapy shortly to once again gain her mobility and hopefully a full recovery. I know her goal is to once again engage the council and attend meetings in the near future. I do believe Michelle is joining us via Bellevue Twenty-One this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. And best wishes to her.
The next speaker is Don Marsh.
Good evening. My name is Don Marsh. I'm the president of SENSE, the Coalition of Eastside Neighborhoods for Sensible Energy. Early this morning, SENSE submitted a request to the Washington Utilities and Transportation Commission. We are asking that the commission require PSE to update misleading or out-of-date assumptions that the company has been using to justify the construction of Energize Eastside. You should have received a copy of our request to the UTC, but for the benefit of our audience, I will summarize the five questions we asked. One, what justifies PSE's predicted growth of peak customer demand on the east side? Two, in which locations and customer sectors is high demand growth expected? Three, how much electricity is the state of Washington obligated to send to Canada? Four, what federal reliability standards apply to this project? Five, can modern technologies like batteries help reduce peak demand? Through careful research and consultation with experts, SENSE has obtained preliminary answers for each of these five questions, and we now have five compelling reasons that indicate Energize Eastside is not a prudent expenditure for PSE's ratepayers. Solutions like batteries and demand response will increase electrical reliability and keep our electric bills low. We can preserve our trees and lower greenhouse gas emissions, and we don't have to risk increase, we don't have to increase risk of pipeline explosions next to our homes and schools. We are not asking for any action from the Bellevue City Council at this time, but we just wanted to keep you in the loop regarding the latest developments in this ongoing debate. We want you and the citizens of the east side to rest assured that there are better solutions than what PSE is offering, and we will continue our work to see them implemented for the benefit of residents, businesses, and the environment. Thank you very much.
Good, thank you.
The next speaker is Pamela Johnston.
Hi, Pamela Johnston, thirty-seven, forty-one, one-twenty-second, Navin, northeast. Okay, first of all, I wanna say, this speaks a lot to me, not to you, that I spend a lot of time with young children. But, once upon a time, there were three little pigs, and they told them to make some beautiful houses that's sustainable, states, has sustainability. And one made it out of hay, one made it out of wood, one made it out of bricks, and they were all beautiful. But then, they said, wait a second, those are all good buildings, and they're beautiful, and they're sustainable, but we need strong buildings. So the first guy said, oh, strong, I can make my hay, pressed board, all that one facet, new stuff, and, wait a second, make sure we're doing it for a big wind. Oh, wind, I can make sheer walls, I can do that. Second guy says, I can do that too with my wood. We're going for sheer sustainability, beautiful, and strong. Got it. The guy with the bricks say, well, I was going for strong, but my strong doesn't really work with a lot of sheer walls and all that, but I can do it if I combine some of these things that are all above. And so they did it. And so, what they needed to have was to think of what was the thing they were trying to do to begin with. Maybe they got confused in the weeds about being brick, being, being, I can't say straw for some reason today, being wood. Instead, what they wanted was, you know, strong winds, right? Two things. What I think that's, council needs to go back and rethink, what we want is air and light. And you can't turn one dial and make air and light happen. It's a whole construct. So I think that we're talking a lot tonight about one dial, and there's multiple dials on that, and what are the big ones that we need to change? And don't just go back and say, okay, one, A, B, or C, will that make us have the right air and light? Because it doesn't make sense if you don't take the whole concept into account, and maybe you need to change the space between buildings or something like that, that's really gonna give us air and light. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Our fourth and final speaker is Karen Morris.
Karen Morris, one-five-seven-eight-eight, Northeast Fourth Street, Bellevue. I wanted to speak tonight about issues of trust, and I, I know, I'm not speaking so much to council tonight, I know we've kind of hashed over that with council and staff, but I, I feel like as I, I've sat here and listened to a lot of testimony, there's a thing that's bothered me for some time, and I thought I'd like to take some time to address it. And this is issues of trust around the people proposing and, on both sides, of the men's shelter issue. At the very first meeting, which was over a year ago, there were congregations for homeless representatives that said that there had been no problems in the neighborhoods around these sites, and I made a point of talking to the representative afterwards and letting him know that I was actually aware of a number of problems, and that I felt it was not particularly helpful to describe it in an inaccurate way, and that it did not lead to a good discussion. So I suggested that they be more accurate and upfront. At the second meeting, there was some of that, and there was a neighborhood representative there who talked about some of the problems that had happened at one of the sites, and I was glad to see that. Unfortunately, since then, it has swung back the other way, and up until the last time I've heard people speak on this, I've heard advocates and volunteers, et cetera, getting up repeatedly, speaking in support, and making untrue statements, numerous of them claiming that there have not been any incidents, that there have not been any problems, and this is simply not true, and it's not a path towards respectful collaboration, in my opinion. The citizens of Bellevue are intelligent, and many of them do their homework. When you continue to ignore the realities of the situation, you are damaging the possibility of developing the trust that is needed to move forward towards solutions that work for all. I don't know exactly why these statements continue to be made, but none of the possible reasons I can posit are very good. I would urge those who testify in support of this proposal to do their homework, to be informed, and to only make claims that are factually supported. I think that would be very helpful in moving this conversation forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, that completes the individuals who signed up on the sign-in sheet tonight. There is additional time if there's anybody who would like to speak to council, otherwise oral communications is complete.
Reports to community councils, etc., no items scheduled tonight? The next item on our agenda is a report of the city manager. Brad, are there any items to present tonight?
No report this evening, Mayor.
Okay, the next item is seven council business and new initiatives. Councilmember Wallace has raised an item he wishes to bring forward tonight, and so we will, and he has provided information and a PowerPoint and all that he's provided himself, and the, you know, the staff has helped facilitate this, but this is a presentation from Councilmember Robertson, uh, Councilmember Wallace, and...
Robinson.
Sorry. Never mind. Yes, sir. All right. Where'd you go?
And I assume Deputy Mayor Chalmanac, you're okay going second?
Yeah, mine is, that, it just has some context regarding yours, so I'm happy with that.
It flows better if you go two instead of one, that's cool.
Let me clarify that this is Councilmember Wallace's presentation.
It is.
Yeah. Presentation, and Deputy Mayor Chalmanac is, has a presentation as well, so.
Right. So, and also on the staff assistance, the, as I've made clear, the staff has been agnostic, I guess would be a fair way to describe this, they helped me load it on the video screen, but it is something that I've come up with, and the idea is to try to provide, you know, we're not making decisions tonight, we're, just to provide a, a discussion about the, the maintenance facility site. First of all, I wanna do is provide a little context for people who haven't been with us every Monday night, kind of where we started. So we started back in April, the staff had looked at five sites for the shelter, and it narrowed it down to one, there was only one they felt was a viable site, and that was the East Gate location. And in April, the council added the two additional sites, the Lincoln Center property and the maintenance facility site. So, oh, Sandy? So the Lincoln Center, the Lincoln Center property is right across the street from here, you can see City Hall on the far, I have a little pointer, I may as well use it, right there is City Hall. This is where the, the day, the winter shelter is located right now, and the building is at the end of its useful life, it's not code compliant, we can't have the shelter here year-round, but the idea is to, to keep this as the Band-Aid location until a permanent facility is, is available. And I think we've all agreed that a permanent facility is necessary, it's really things are coming down to, what's the location? And I feel like if we can get the right location, we can design a facility or work with congregations for the homeless to do that, and it'll be great. The next slide. This is the East Gate site, a little small on this, but you see the, this is the East Gate Park and Ride, and the idea would be to put the shelter here on the county's property with the ground lease from the county to a partnership of sorts between congregations for the homeless and Imagine Housing. I think one of the negatives of this deal is that there's four parties involved, Bellevue, King County, CFH, and Imagine, and that just makes things incredibly complicated, which may be why, even though this first came out to light in August of last year, there hasn't really been a lot of movement, forward movement on the project. So what we have today is kind of these concept designs, and pretty much what we had last August, for the shelter. The basic features of the shelter is a hundred-bed overnight facility, which is comparable to what the winter shelter is today, a day center of a hundred and twenty-five seats, which is comparable to what the day center was before it got closed down, and then fifty to sixty units of affordable housing with some complimentary services like medical and counseling and so forth in the building. And then go ahead to the next one, Sandy? So this is the slide kind of showing for context where the, the maintenance facility location is, up here on One Hundred and Twentieth, this is where Sound Transit plans to put the maintenance facility, and then there was a plan to put the transit-oriented development site to... you can see City Hall on the far, I have a little pointer, I may as well use it, right there is City Hall. This is where the winter shelter is located right now, and the building is at the end of its useful life, it's not code compliant, we can't have the shelter here year-round, but the idea is to keep this as the Band-Aid location until a permanent facility is available. And I think we've all agreed that a permanent facility is necessary, because really, things are coming down to what's the location, and I feel like if we can get the right location, we can design a facility or work with congregations for the homeless to do that, and it'll be great. The next slide. This is the East Gate site, a little small on this, but you see the, this is the East Gate parking ride, and the idea would be to put the shelter here on the county's property with a ground lease from the county to a partnership of sorts between congregations for the homeless and Imagine Housing. I think one of the negatives of this deal is that there's four parties involved, Bellevue, King County, CFH, and Imagine, and that just makes things incredibly complicated, which may be why, even though this first came out to light in August of last year, there hasn't really been a lot of movement, forward movement on the project. So what we have today is kind of these concept designs and pretty much what we had last August for the shelter. The basic features of the shelter is a hundred-bed overnight facility, which is comparable to what the winter shelter is today, a day center of 125 seats, which is comparable to what the day center was before it got closed down, and then 50 to 60 units of affordable housing with some complimentary services like medical and counseling and so forth in the building. And then, go ahead to the next one, Sandy? So this is the slide kind of showing for context where the maintenance facility location is, up here on 120th, this is where Sound Transit plans to put the maintenance facility, and then there was a plan to put the transit-oriented development site to the south of it, and then this is our rail spur parcel down here that I'll show you, which is where the proposal is to put the shelter on our property. And I also just added, for context, the downtown and where the hospitals are and so forth. Okay, go to the next one. So this is the current status of the ownership of the land for the maintenance facility property, and you see Sound Transit in the blue has either condemned or is in the process of condemning all of that land for the maintenance facility and the TOD area. But this piece right here is our property, it's about 47,000 square feet, and you see it juts right into Sound Transit's property. So regardless of the shelter discussion, something has to happen, we have made no commitments yet to transfer that property to Sound Transit, and so something has to happen between Bellevue and Sound Transit to get that panhandle out of the way of their property to make the TOD area work. The other thing I put on the slide was the two stars, the one at the top is where the shelter was last year, is the International Fibers Building before Sound Transit condemned it, and then the star down below, of course, is where I'm proposing we move the shelter, and you see they're only a few hundred feet apart. So in kind of looking at the, you know, the community impacts of the whole thing, in my view, it already was here, we didn't hear a lot of complaints about it when it was there, and so I don't know why we would expect to have a lot for the new location in this place. Next slide. Okay, so this is Sound Transit's concept design, the slide on the left is a little higher-quality rendering of it, but the one on the right is the same, it's just the plan view. This Sound Transit presented to the Council in June of this year, after we had, in April, added the two sites, including the maintenance facility site, to our homeless shelter discussion. This was developed under a confidential arrangement, Bellevue had a staff member involved in the discussions, but it was never presented to the Council or the public until June. And so, we have not had a chance to comment on this, other than when we first had it revealed to us in June, and, you know, so again, regardless of the shelter, now is a perfectly appropriate time for us to be commenting on and talking about whether this concept design works, and also about making changes to the concept design. So over here, what you see is, again, this is Bellevue's property, and you see how it goes through building five of Sound Transit's design and building two of Sound Transit's design, and really just kind of severs the whole thing. So, and then in taking a look at this, when I was working with an architectural firm out of Kirkland called Link Design, who's really done a great job in working with me to come up with this proposal, we had the following goals. One was to adjust our parcel boundary so that it was of a size that worked for the shelter, but also got out of Sound Transit's way and enabled the TOD. The new parcel should be about the same size, and we ended up getting it to be exactly the same size. And then you see buildings four and five here, obviously, they're going to need to be changed in order to make room for the shelters, so the idea was to have those be viable for residential development. They're currently intended for residential, and so the goal is to make them the same of a scale or size that would work for residential after we're done with the design. Then we had this mitigation concept of having 1.2 million square feet of development potential in the TOD area, and so maintaining that development potential was a facet of it, and then incorporate all the elements of the East Gate shelter. So we basically used that design as a cue for the design of the new facility. Go ahead to the next slide. And so this is the plan of, the site plan of what we came up with, and you see this colored parcel here, this would be the new boundary, the new parcel with the boundary line adjustment, this again shows the old, the current city parcel, and what it does, you see it allows for the footprint of the lot to work for the shelter building. And then up here, buildings four and five have been changed to a size of building that works for multifamily residential, but then what doesn't change is the road in between the buildings and buildings one, two, three, or six. All that is exactly the same. So it says, "Little impact to Sound Transit's concept design as possible," but at the same time allows us to achieve the goal of having a site that works for us and would allow for a shelter to be built on it by congregations for the homeless. Go ahead. So this shows the two massing, massing plans, this is Sound Transit's version, and this is our version, and you can see how the buildings in the, for the shelter have, you know, get more rectangular and out of the way, and then we put the shelter down there at the south. So the only thing that gets eliminated here is there's a little retail kiosk that they showed on the corner here, and otherwise, we've got the buildings, again, viable, and these remain, again, the same. Go ahead to the next one. So this is the floor plans of the shelter, this is a parking floor, it would be on the ground, down here is the first floor at ground level of 120th Street, the entrance would be on the southeast corner of the building. This is the first floor of the shelter and would have day services, so the day room and associated counseling and other services that go along with it. Then one floor up would be the night room, so that you have the bunk room with a hundred-bed facility and still more service capacity. This is about twice as large as the East Gate shelter, square footage-wise, so lots of good opportunities for programming the shelter. And then up above, what we have is three floors, this is basically, this represents floor one, and this is floors two and three, and that allows for 50 to 60 units of residential. What we're showing is an option to do a congregate housing option with smaller rooms and a community kitchen and living room area, that's what this is representing, and then this is more studio units. And what we've been discussing is, rather than having a partnership with Imagine Housing and congregations for the homeless, to have congregations do the whole facility, and rather than having it be mixed gender, to have it only catered to the men, and the idea would be the men come in into the shelter, and as they get more stable, start moving up the floor into congregate housing and/or studio units, and then ultimately exit the building as they become more stable. So a lot more to come on the potential plan for the shelter at the site. You can see the size of it allows for all the elements that we were looking at at the East Gate site. Go ahead. This slide just quickly shows how the development capacity remains about the same, that 1.2 million square feet is achieved. And then go ahead to the next one. And then this is a little video that will kind of spin the building around, show it from all angles, and while that's spinning, I wanted to address the letter that Sound Transit sent about a month ago without, unsolicited, basically taking issue with the idea of, taking issue with this idea. And the first thing they said was that there was an agreement, the agreement's between Sound Transit and Bellevue on this date back to 2015, and there's an MOU between Bellevue and Sound Transit, and then there's something called an implementation agreement. And the first thing they said was the MOU calls for 1.2 million square feet of transit-oriented development. Well, with this plan, we still have that. Then they said Sound Transit has no interest in revisiting its planned designs. Well, as I've said, we haven't had a chance to opine on them, we have to get our land out of the way, so of course, you know, we need, we both need to have a conversation about it, if they want to do the TOD site, you know, we have to have that conversation. They said, "The implementation agreement and the MOU must be honored." Well, there's nothing about this proposal that is inconsistent with either of those agreements. Then, they said, "The late-breaking introduction of a shelter into the OMFE's development will undermine the chances of realizing the envisioned TOD." Well, the nice thing about this is, it's not part of the TOD, it's separate from the TOD. And an important element to that is, if we achieve the boundary line adjustment, we can just basically put a fence on the northern boundary of the adjusted parcel, they can use the remainder of it for construction staging, and we have clear path to do a ground lease to congregations for the homeless and get the permitting and construction done on our timeline, so neither party's interfering with the other. And then the last thing they said was that they can't recommend we endanger the TOD vision by issuing an RFP for developers that includes or seeks to incentivize a shelter. And again, that's not the proposal. The proposal is to have a separate boundary line adjustment, and what Sound Transit, and once the boundary line adjustment is complete, Sound Transit's out of the picture, they do their thing, and we work with congregations for the homeless to put the shelter in this location. So that's the information for now, this is really just intended to enter this into the conversation and try to better describe the idea behind putting the shelter in the Bell Red area on our property, and hopefully we can continue to figure out how to advance the conversation going forward. Though the one thing I would say is that, you know, the time is really now to have this conversation between Bellevue and Sound Transit about adjusting the parcels, because regardless of whether the shelter goes here, that property needs to get out of their way to make the TOD happen.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate all the work you've done and put into it. Yeah.
If I could comment, thank you, this is why we're going to miss you so much when you leave the Council. Yeah. It's great to have someone who can envision this kind of stuff. I had actually forgotten about the rail spur, and I find it slightly appalling that Sound Transit doesn't think we have the right to negotiate for how our own property is used. So I would like to know from staff what the process or schedule is for the Sound Transit plan, and dealing with the issue of the fact that they are planning three buildings which encroach upon either wholly or partially onto a city of Bellevue-owned piece of property.
So, city staff has been involved through the RFP design-build process with Sound Transit, including looking at this design and participating, sorry.
My mic's playing on. Participating in scoring and evaluating that, which led to the successful, presumed successful bidder with Sound Transit. The next steps would be to continue to look at, this is a concept design for the TOD, so the next steps were to continue to work with Sound Transit and the City Council and Sound Transit Board to take that into something that would allow the city and Sound Transit to be thinking about an RFP process for an actual TOD kind of development sometime in the first half of next year. So the idea was, late this year, early next year, the agency would go out for what's called an RFI, and I can't remember what that acronym stands for, but it's something less-
Request for information.
There you go, request for information, that would help us have a better understanding of how the market might respond to this opportunity, whether it's this kind of mix of uses or something other than what was in the concept design. We would certainly then engage with the city of, with the city council about how does our spur parcel play into that, play into accomplishing the overall objectives that the council laid out back at the time of the MOU and the implementation agreement to maximize TOD, to achieve the 1.2 million FAR that was envisioned, all consistent with the Bell Red vision for this area.
Okay, so, but Sound Transit could not apply for a permit or whoever they engage for our property unless we either sold it to them or gave permission for them to apply for someone to do a master development plan, for example, that was over top of Bellevue's property, right?
So a couple different things going on, in the MOU and the implementation agreement, we called for Sound Transit for their OMFE project to do what's a master development plan for actually the entire properties that you see there. They have submitted for that, it came in with the spur property as a part of that MDP, and we submitted a letter as the property owner to the permitting agency saying, "It's okay, we understand, it's part of this MDP process, as the property owner, we are okay with that." The purpose of that single MDP is really to, it gets into the details of the OMFE project itself, so it's got all of the buildings for the OMFE, the maintenance-of-way building, the track, where's all of that. In respect to the TOD property, the city was really pushing for a single MDP to provide some more certainty, again, to the market about how the TOD property would relate to the OMFE. So if you remember from the MOU timeframe, the city bargained for certain utilities to be connected across from the OMFE to serve the TOD property, to make that a little bit more developable when Sound Transit is done with their project, talk about how circulation and access would work into that TOD property. So it's those kinds of things where, how is the trail access that the city bargained for going to be accommodated in the future TOD? So some of those bigger chunks of how the two projects would work together are covered in this MDP. This MDP is the entitlement for their OMFE project, and then kind of sets the stage for the future TOD. So you are absolutely correct, there's nothing about that that requires the city of Bellevue to ultimately sell the property or to contribute it to the future TOD. It again provides some certainty for all of us about how might development proceed in the future.
And if, and what ultimately happens with that property is a city council decision, right? Is the council retains authority over real estate for the city?
Correct.
Okay, I just wanted to get that out there. I would very much like to see, just from my perspective, when we are starting to have that discussion, if not sooner, for us to make sure that we weave this in, we have those discussions with Sound Transit, because it is our property, and no matter what designs they have. So, thank you.
So I actually have a small presentation as well. I want to assure people that those discussions with Sound Transit have been ongoing and very serious. But what I want to do with this is do a little bit of level-setting. There was a great question that was asked by Mr. Sanchez, "What's next?", so I want to try to answer a little of that in this, and then because I was the representative for the city to the stakeholders group or the elected representative, I want to talk about how we got to this TOD development process. I think that there are some issues with what Councilmember Wallace has put forward. I have some differences of opinion on some of his, on some of the statements about some things. I don't want to have a fight, what I want to do is try to clarify a little bit of that. So if you have an opportunity, and I, this also was, I was one of the persons, there were several council members, but I happen to be one of those who has pushed very strongly for us to have the homeless shelter, to have a permanent site for the congregations for the homeless shelter. So, given that, I put this together today, I did not have help from staff, I have cobbled together some information that comes from Sound Transit, it is documentation that's public. So, again, the progress to date and what is next? If you'd go to the next slide. Can we go to the next? Okay. So, and Councilmember Wallace touched on some of this, and we've touched on this multiple times. We did have a multi-year process, it was internal to the city and Arch, after the council put this in our council vision, to find a site for the shelter. During that process, what happened is, a proposal came forward to use the East Gate Public Health Site. That proposal came from King County, Imagine Housing, and congregations for the homeless. Any place that we build a shelter in this city will include almost all of those partners in it, because King County is the major funder, so they will be a part of it. If it doesn't have housing, then you wouldn't necessarily have a housing component to it. I hope that we can have a shelter that has that housing component to it. There has now been, after the letter of agreement was reached, and that was a unanimous decision of the council, we've had an extensive public process, and we went back, we have, I've-
Let me, this is, this is not a debate between us and the audience.
So, yeah, thank you, John.
Just be courteous, we were courteous to Councilmember Wallace, be the same courteous to Deputy Mayor. The speaker earlier talked about, you know, being honest and upfront and talking about things, and it's not just a one-way street. Just saying no and shouting down doesn't help anybody, doesn't help move anybody's thoughts.
So, I appreciate the comments, and, you know, people are entitled to their thought. We have had, in my mind, an extensive public process. We have had a number of public meetings, we have had, and I would agree with Ms. Morris, I think some people have overstated things. Some people have understated the risk, and some people have very much overstated the risk and the issues. And I know the issues that were caused in her neighborhood by Tent City, by Tent City, and I understand that perfectly. In September of 2017, just a little bit ago, we unanimously adopted the East Gate zoning. That zoning allows for a shelter, day center, and supportive housing. That decision was unanimous on the part of the council, and that is what the council needed to do to satisfy the provision in the letter of agreement. I disagree with Councilmember Wallace that the process for the East Gate site was stalled. I agree, I disagree with Councilmember Wallace that the process for the East Gate site was stalled by the parties. I believe it was stalled by going through that process, but I'm fine with it having gone through that process. So we've now met the letter of agreement and it's up to congregations for the homeless, Imagine Housing, and King County to put together, I think what's required under that is a funding agreement. What's required under that is a property agreement for the disposition of the property. I would encourage them, if they are going to go ahead with this site, to work on an operational plan and then to bring that forward and again, continue to have a public dialogue. But that is, in my mind, where we are for the next step in that process. If we go to the, to the next slide, this is what we've looked at as solutions for homelessness, and I'll be very quick with this. This is in our comprehensive plan and the regional all-home plan. We want homelessness to be rare, brief, and one-time. We need to have a emergency shelter to be able to accomplish that. You also need to have housing after shelter, and I think that's been stated. And frankly, I agree with Councilmember Wallace totally on that. And the city has developed an affordable housing plan and we've been increasing funding. And that again has been a unanimous decision. I also think the data shows very clearly that from this last year, the concept that CFH has had of putting the day shelter, the day center in with the shelter, has been a success. They have had the opportunity to move people out of emergency housing and along the spectrum of getting back into housing. So let me go to the next slide. This is the OMFE TOD development, and I just put up a couple of headlines from 2014 and 2015. It seems like it was only yesterday. We were very angry with what Sound Transit did to us, all seven council members at the time. And you can even see here, the, the lead to the article, Bellevue officials had been accusing Sound Transit of betrayal and bad faith last summer. I've got to say, that was an accurate statement. They, it was actually, it was Councilmember Robertson and I who went to the Sound Transit Board meeting and prosecuted our case to replace the 1.2 million square feet. And to have a real process to do that, not to have Sound Transit just go, oh, we'll try something. And Sound Transit has truthfully kept its word. And they've kept that working with staff and with elected leaders and with stakeholders. There was a very small part of this that was, had a, one staff member on our staff working on it. This is a very small part, and it was in the zero to 30% design concept of this. That was where that was. So next slide, please. So, they brought in HR and A advisors. This is an economic development and real estate firm. It has a very strong national reputation to put together this plan. They looked at lots of different plans of how the OMFE could fit in. We looked at plans that had different platforms built within the OMFE structure over track. And this is the we being the stakeholder committee. We had a number of different things, and they finally figured out a great way, and it's been brought to us, of moving the OMFE up and having the TOD development as near to the station as is possible. Next slide. Very quickly, just to show, these are some of the projects they work on. Anacostia, the High Line, I think that's New York. They work on big projects. They know what they're doing. Next line. So this was what they came up with. Exemplary goal, value through placemaking, embracing the vision and principles, and maximizing the utilization of residual land. Our land is residual land. The market that is there is a 60,000 square foot market. It's not a kiosk. It's basically a major store. That's where much of the, or it may be a little bit smaller than that, but that's where a significant amount of retail would go. That is the site that Councilmember Wallace has, has said, let's put a homeless shelter there. I do want to say, and I believe he recognizes this, without a boundary line adjustment, you can't do what, you can't put on our parcel what he proposed. I believe that's the case. So you have to have that boundary line adjustment, and that brings me to the next step. This has been very well thought out to get this in. 60,000 square feet of retail, office at 650, 550 units of housing roughly. And we are looking at the ways to do that so that they are market rate, they are affordable housing, and they have efficiency units in them. The 1.1 to 1.2 million square feet, there's parking, density is 3,600 people. And the FAR there is at 3.4. They could go a little bit higher on the next slide. And this is why moving things around in this, just sliding buildings somewhere becomes much more difficult. There are connections that need to be made. A key connection is the connection through this development to the East Side Rail Corridor. I was looking at what Councilmember Wallace put out. There may be a way to do that. But in this case, the way to do that would be going directly, if I looked at his plan, it would be the, the trail would go directly along where the, where he's planning for the, for the shelter. There's also connection in the future to Ichigo Way. So this has been a very well thought out plan. And I have to say, to simply say, put up a fence and it's across the street from the rest of the TOD development, I have to say, that's the one you pushed my button a little too far, Kevin.
I think you misunderstood what I was saying. It's during construction you could put up a fence for safety measures. I wasn't intending for it to be permanent.
Well, then the, what, but still, putting it on this site makes it an integral part of the TOD development. Next slide. So where do we go now? We have been working cooperatively with Sound Transit to get this to market, get the TOD development consistent with the MOU. The, the stakeholder committee that's been meeting this includes REI, Children's Hospital, University of Washington. It includes myself, the deputy mayor. It includes the deputy city manager. It includes the deputy King County executive. It includes members who represent the East Side Rail Corridor. There's a significant number of people who have been working on this. So this has not been done in any form of vacuum. Also, the nearby landowners have been working on this. I think the key thing here is determining the value of the spur property. And then the question is, what public purpose do we use that value for? My personal opinion is affordable housing and a park is the best place to take the value of that land and put it. To leverage it for the development of affordable housing. It could be the affordable housing that is in that development. It could be something like a Bellevue Housing Trust Fund or some form of revolving loan fund. I say, allow Imagine Housing, Congregations for the Homeless in King County to go forward and come up with their East Gate plan. Or say they're not going to. If they're not going to, then we're back into another process. I will say, there are at least two sites that I would prefer to what Mr. Wallace has put forward. But if it can't be done, we'll have to look at other sites. But the place to do that with this proposal is consistent with the process that we signed off on, which would be consistent with having somebody come forward to offer it within that RFI when it's out in the, hopefully the second quarter of 2018 or the third quarter of 2018. So I will, I, I believe everything that I've said matches policies that the city council has adopted. Most of those policies unanimously. Okay. Any other comments? People who haven't spoken yet?
I say a few words.
Okay.
Yeah, this is an amazing presentation. Deputy Mayor Shumak just presented. It's very well done. It's professionally almost, I mean, compliment to you who made up this thing. It's almost like a Sound Transit presentation with a lot of information in it. But, no, 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 come on, don't. There's no compliment. It's complimentary for what Mr. Shumak has done. On its own, these are very good analysis on its own. When the work was done on TOD, Sound Transit working with city, good stuff. You know, very thought of, well-considered presentations. But a lot of stuff, I think, it's not been really discussed fully on the, by the council. A lot of information, I don't believe we have thorough discussion, conversation. The concept is for sure, definitely, I agree, TOD, Sound Transit, but these are very much detailed. The development Sound Transit, you know, has proposed, as shown. I don't recall. I must be blanked out or something. I think because we don't have the scheduled session and detailed discussion to really talk about them. I don't remember any specific discussion that we agreed to this idea concept or presented on the, what I just presented. If we had, it's different. We make decisions, we approved it, and I don't think so. It's just basically a concept. It may, may even be one-sided or whatever, but if it isn't, I don't think it locks up in as what you presented. Especially now, in light of the, you know, when we make decisions, it's always best, you could change based on balance, weighing the pros and cons, what new information, what new opportunities we have. I think right now we're talking about real controversial issue, tough issue about homeless site. That's showing a big, 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 big picture, real new twist on what we're talking about. So I think, to me, it's such a big issue. Everything's open. Unfortunately, it is. That's what we're here for. We always have to tackle the issues based on what's come up to us. Three years ago, five years ago, whenever it was done, in a vacuum on its own, great, great stuff. But I think now with what we're looking at, a homeless shelter, it's a brand, brand-new bargaining. So I, so I think Mr. Wallace has presented something as alternative based on homeless site, based on new issue. To me, you know, we have to decide for the community which is now more important to look at. This is a new, new bargaining. So I'm willing to look at this homeless site in light of the TOD development. I think Mr. Wallace has come out with a solution. And I'm, you know, at this point, both are new ideas that presented to me. And I really like to look at both of them very closely and spend time to understand both together, not just isolated. And understand, and the community need to look at it. The community's input got to give us because it affects everybody. You know, it affects all of us. So I think we need to look at this whole, total. So I would, would like to have the, the show, the slides for me so I can really go through, understand it better. And then I believe the council probably will be interested, should be, looking at this whole, whole thing altogether. And there may be other things we need to be also considering. As I have asked, you know, homeless shelter, it's not just a location, just want to do this because we have, we have a proposal that's come up to us. It's really a big, big question that affects the whole city, that concerns, we talk about. Mento, safety, public, cost, everything has to be discussed. So I, I believe this is a very, very important, serious issue. We need to really look at seriously together. Don't just jump at the, isolate this. So this is great, that's great, that's great. We're gonna, well, we're gonna spend lots of money. We're gonna do wonderful things everywhere, but nothing works together and nobody likes it. That's not the way it works. So I want to thank Mr. Wallace for spending a lot of time looking at, addressing one problem. And I really appreciate, you know, Deputy Mayor come up with this history. And TOD is an important situation, especially on its own. But let's look at it wholly, holistically, and let's figure out what we can do about it.
Thank, thank you.
Thanks.
Will.
So I just had a little bit of follow-up to the earlier comments. Could you flip down to the slide that, keep going, keep going? Back, okay, back. Yeah, right, that's probably good. So first of all, I just want to point out that this, this option is, is more ideal because we can do, we can do the residential and the shelter together. There is an option that compacts it to a three-story building, single-use shelter building, and it would fit on our site, at least as I understand the site right now. And remember, this is a concept, right? I mean, we haven't done geotechnical studies and all the other things we need to do to really make sure exactly how it all lays out. But there is a, there's a potential just to do it on our site. But the important thing is, you know, it's really in the both sides' best interest to be collaborative because this whole thing doesn't work unless we can get that out of their way. So that's point number one. Oh, could you go down to the slide where you compare the areas of the, of the two options?
Yeah.
Yeah. So, the, the market is 1,887 square feet. That's Sound Transit's numbers, so it's not a lot of retail. It's not going to be huge. 1,887 square feet is about the size of a Starbucks. And then the other thing I want to point out is just that, you know, this is the, the concept design, concept design for the transit-oriented development is not something that's been done with the typical public process that something that's a Bellevue property would go through. The Stakeholders Group was the functional equivalent of redesigning downtown Bellevue Park with a group made up of Kemper Development, his tenants, and his consultants, and a couple of people from the city. It then went into a process with Sound Transit on their site for their TOD site that was designed in, under a confidentiality agreement with one staff member from the City of Bellevue. And to my knowledge, other than Nancy, we had no input into that design. And so now it's come out in June, where it's like, here's your concept design on your property. And in the, in the middle of it, I discover, well, hey, you know, we have a need for a homeless shelter and we have this property here. Personally, I'd rather put it to that use. So a concept design is a concept design for a reason. It's at a point where it's easy to make changes to it. And so this now is that time. It is totally inappropriate for Sound Transit to put in a letter to us that the conversation's closed because the conversation's just opening for everybody except for the very few who are involved with the Stakeholders Group or the confidential design that Sound Transit and its consultants did.
So can I ask you a question on this slide? Where, where is the 65,300 square feet of retail in yours?
No, it's the retail kiosk slash shelter. So in option A, it's.
But the Sound Transit project also has the 60,000. So if you're just taking the 1,887 out with the, with the kiosk, that's 65, then there's still 65,000 or 60, 63,000 left, which would add to the total down below.
Well, I mean, we can show you the, the detail, but basically up at the, this part.
Well, I think what you did is you showed, you showed the deduction from the 65,000, not the, so I, I think that's, I think it's.
So let me just to be clear. This, this information up here is all Sound Transit's architect or, you know, with his Hensel Phelps outfit. That's their information. And it shows buildings one through six, plus the retail kiosk, which I plugged in here. What changes in our concept, buildings one, two, through three are the same. Buildings four and five are 150,000 square feet. One's a little bit smaller, one's a little bit bigger.
Oh, I get what you're doing. Okay.
Building six is the same, and then we swap out the retail kiosk for the shelter. And the shelter is 65,000 square feet. So actually, on the site, the development yield increases a little bit, but both of them are about 1.2 million square feet.
Okay, I, I understand your, your math now. Thank you. Again, difficult to understand these, you know, when we're just on the fly here. But I, and again, I appreciate, I, I will say this. I mean, again, I appreciate the work. I just wish you would appreciate the work that other people have done regarding this.
Yeah.
Rather than always viewing it in a pejorative, rather than in these, you know, and, and that's, you know. You know, anyway.
Yeah, I'm not unappreciative. I'm just saying, we have conversations about things and so far, the conversation's been one-sided. I haven't, you know, I haven't had a chance to be part of the conversation. So here it is.
Mr. Mayor.
Let me ask a question on this. And my understanding is that what has been shown is a very preliminary, the, the basic plan that Councilmember Wallace is talking about is a preliminary design and that overlaps our property. And if we don't agree to that, they do something else, right? And this isn't set in stone and they can't come in. Obviously, they understand that and they acknowledge that. They can't come in and build something over our. They can't come in and build something over our property unless we agree to it. So to base everything on that this is a fixed design, and so we're gonna move things around is not reality at this point. Isn't that correct? I mean, they're not, what, what has been presented as the plan, including putting a part of a building across our spur, is not the final plan, it's not set in stone, it was just designed at a certain time, that's been, that design's been around for some time.
So it is a concept design, and it was intended to show, it was intended as part of the RFP process for the OMFE to encourage maximizing the ability of those surplus properties to support the kind of development that the Bell Red envisions and that approximated the 1.2 million square feet. So it was intended to show you could get there with the way that the successful design bidder ended up reconfiguring, to some extent, some of the OMFE, and shows that potential, and shows the potential to include some of the other things that the city bargained for in the MOU. So, so it's a concept for that reason. Based on the council direction and the TOD principles that we had, the MOU and the implementation agreement, we've had many conversations about a shared objective with our property and Sound Transit's property to achieve something like that TOD that meets the Bell Red principle, that it accomplishes 1.2 million square feet. So we certainly haven't committed to sell that property, we haven't committed to allow any particular development over it, but we have been participating for several years in the assumption that that kind of area that is identified, including ours and their, would go forward through this process, go to market, and end up with a development that approximates the 1.2 million square feet mixed-use Bell Red vision.
Right, okay. Someone hadn't spoken yet, comment, Lynn?
Well, I sure appreciate everybody's support for homeless shelter in Bellevue. We have a very real bins homeless problem that is not gonna go away, and I thank council members Chelman, Acken, Wallace for working on this.
Absolutely.
I have a question from the community feedback that I've received. The biggest reason that people don't think that East Gate is an appropriate site for the proposed men's shelter, supportive services, and housing is the proximity to neighborhoods. So in my estimation, it's about, it's about 500 feet away from the nearest condominium building, and what you are proposing, Councilmember Wallace, is less than 100 feet away from a multifamily housing. So can you help me understand why that's a good decision?
I, there's, I mean, I encourage you to go out and look at the site, but it's, it's got a big warehouse across the street from it, it, you know, at the, as it stands right now, it doesn't have anything near it.
But we're talking about when you're gonna be building this, you're gonna be building it, we won't have access to this property, and you're gonna be building it right next to families and people who live there, so-
What families are we gonna be building? You're talking about in the, in the concept design of a TOD site that hasn't yet been built?
Mm-hmm.
So basically, what we're having is in East Gate, we have a situation where we're planning to put a homeless shelter next to residential properties that are already built and weren't designed with it in mind, and we're comparing it to putting a shelter at a place that's on a piece of vacant land within hundreds of feet of where the shelter was, where nobody complained about it, and where there's a concept proposal that, as Kate said, may or may not be the proposal at the end of the day, and certainly where we can design going forward to mitigate the impacts of the shelter and, in fact, embrace the shelter. And by the way, the shelter, the intent of the shelter is to build it in accordance with the design guidelines from the Bell Red Code, completely consistent with what the zoning ordinance has required for the building, so that it will be complementary to the quality, the kind of buildings that are in that neighborhood. So I think we have every opportunity here to make this something that not only can the city as a whole embrace, because it's in the right location, but that it really fits within the overall nature and feel that we're trying to achieve with the transit-oriented development of that area, because we can design it in.
So you're saying that if we design the shelter appropriately, it'll be fine to have it next to multifamily housing?
I think that both projects can, can be able to be designed consistently with each other, wouldn't you? I mean, I think you've said that it's, it's a good idea to have a mix of incomes, and we don't want to just put the shelter by itself in the middle of nowhere, right?
I agree with that.
So this is an opportunity for us to work with our public sector agency, who's building a transit-oriented development opportunity right next door, and locate this low-barrier, low-income shelter with affordable housing on top of it, next to residential that it's designing and putting out into an RFP process, where, I remind you, the rule that the state set in place is that affordable housing needs to be used on 80% of that land. So I think this is a great opportunity for us really to get out there and achieve not just the goals for the shelter, but to achieve a new vision for affordable housing and combining these different mixes of incomes together in one new neighborhood where it can be designed to accommodate these things in advance, as opposed to putting it in a place where it wasn't, and we never gave any forethought to how it might fit to the buildings that are already there.
So I, I just, you know, I, I, I was not gonna go into-
Right.
-a discussion about the elements, but there are 300 occupiable units that are very close to this property already, there are 500 more that are being built that are near to this property. So there has been a dramatic change in this neighborhood, and we all know that this neighborhood is going to undergo dramatic change between now and 2023 with a significant amount of residential development. So all of that is, so I'm, I'm just gonna leave it at that, because I wasn't gonna go into it tonight, but I just, I, I have to say, if you want to go into the specifics of the items that the East Gate residents have been writing us about, I'm happy to go into those, and how both of these sites are incredibly similar.
Well, and I would embrace that. I think we shouldn't ignore anything. It really, you know, this, what this is about is trying to get us back to a point where we should have started, where we're comparing three viable sites instead of just trying to put it at one site. And so I think, you know, my hope is that this is what tonight has accomplished, and now we can go forward, and let's have an honest and open discussion about both locations, and which one's more appropriate.
Can I say something?
So there's one-
No, 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 thank you.
No, thanks. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna leave it at that, because I've spoken and Mr. Wallace has spoken.
Yeah.
I think we're even speaking, actually, I think I have one more, but I'm gonna let any other council members who wish to talk.
Yeah, we might probably come at the end, certainly, yeah. Ernie?
Well, we may not. Well, let's see.
Well, first of all, kudos to Mr. Wallace for presenting a spectacular plan. And quite honestly, and I mean this sincerely, that we can get into the discussion about, is it close to residential now, later, in, in the past, in the future? This gets down to what I've been saying all along, this isn't really about the measurements of one distance or another distance to something, because they're gonna vary in every different place we look at. What we really should be focusing, I think, is from the opposite side, and that is, how do we take something like this and make it work in our community? And I think Kevin's proposal really is an opportunity for us to really get past the, let's argue about whether or not this is a quarter mile or three eighths of a mile from something, and really discuss more, how do we take care of these people, in what environment do we take care of these people, and what are the rules for, of the road for the facilities that house these people? And I hope we can get past that now and get to these, I think, more important discussions. You know, the fact of the matter is, if it goes into the OMFE, it's gonna be really proximate to a residence, 100 feet, 100 yards, whatever, doesn't matter. As I recall, didn't Bellevue School District buy some property just north of that, too? There could be a school up there.
There's, there's a new daycare center just opening up right there.
The Bellevue School District property is exactly 1,000 feet from the north corner of the spur property.
So here again, to me, if, if we start arguing about distance to something-
Right, right.
-we're losing sight of what we're trying to solve, and that is the problem of homelessness, and how do we treat these people in a way that creates a safe, safe environment for our citizens and a safe environment for the people that so much need our help? So I, you know, I look forward to having a good discussion about this. And, you know, frankly, one of my suggestions a couple of months ago was, why can't we have two facilities? Because these are on different sides of the city. I don't know that we want to spend the money for two facilities, but I believe homelessness is only gonna get bigger and more entrenched, not just here, but throughout all of the east side and throughout the Puget Sound area, because I think our economy's gonna continue to boom, you're gonna have more people that, for one reason or another, get thrust into homelessness. Most of them for short-term stuff. Those are not the people that we necessarily worry about, but they still need the services, and they still need our assistance. And then there's that small group, which is really what we're all fearful of, isn't it? It's that group of people that we don't necessarily know how to help as effectively as we possibly can, and let's face it, some of them are not, in no position to accept our help sometimes. So we have to figure out how we're going to do that. We need these facilities badly, and really, we need to get past the, the arguments of not in my backyard, and really look at the discussions of how do we make it work in anyone's backyard? How do we make it safe? How do we make it viable? And how do we do it in a way that is empathetic and helpful to, yes, the people that need our help, but also protect the people that have to live next to these things and close to them?
Yeah. Oh, go ahead, and then I'll, I'd like to have something to say.
Thank you. So thank you for both Deputy Mayor Chelman, and Councilmember Wallace for providing the powerpoints to get us talking about this, because this, this issue has been, as far as the siding, has been a little bit on hold. So I wanted to reflect on the second PowerPoint we saw, because I disagree with some of the conclusions that were inferred. We did unanimously pass the letter of agreement, but that, in my mind, and I know in several of my colleagues' mind, was not a done deal, it was a, more of a license to discuss and explore, and to do our due diligence and to work with King County. The last I heard, King County had not even done the things that they were required to do under that agreement. I haven't had an update in a number of months, but it was not a final determination. Through going through the due diligence, and I've said this, and we had a, did have a split vote, I think it was four to three technically, but more like three and a half to three and a half about moving forward with East Gate, I, and I said at that time, and I'll say again, through the due diligence, my opinion is that the East Gate site is fatally flawed because of the forested area around there. I think it's gonna be incredibly hard to police, I've talked to a number of police officers off the record about the difficulty of trying to make sure that place is safe. So I don't want to get into the details of East Gate, but just, I'm not gonna, I just, but suffice it to say, I don't personally think that's a done deal, and I don't think that it was ever the intention of some of the council members, that that was a done deal, just because we signed the letter of agreement. That said, I'm also a little troubled that folks are more concerned about a future development and the quality of life for those folks than the people who live and have paid taxes in Bellevue all this time. Not that I'm not concerned about having quality of life everywhere. I, but I do think that, just like if a freeway is built before a house, a housing development, the housing development is developed such that it's, they have quieting things put on there, better windows, et cetera, to keep out the dust, to keep out the noise. If something is, that's difficult to cite is there first, or at the same time, something is located, you can design it in such a way as to make it a better development for the difficult-to-site thing, as well as for the surrounding area. So that's where I'd like to see us go. I would like to see staff, I know that there's some digesting to go on, to come back to the council with a rough outline of process for updating on the East Gate site work. Also, the letter of agreement really should be on the homeless shelter site, it's on our page, it's not. I was looking for it a few minutes ago. A, a process on that, as well as the process on the TOD site at the OMFE. Yes, we did know that staff was working on this. I don't know who all was informed as far as the black box that that work was undergoing under, but council was not allowed to know. There was a confidentiality agreement, I wanted updates, I know that my colleagues wanted updates, we were not allowed to have those updates on the OMFE TOD planning. And so we heard about it in June, it is the time now to negotiate, I think it is very ripe right now, to negotiate about it in general, even if the homeless shelter wasn't an issue, which I think it is. And I would definitely like to see a little bit more due diligence done on this plan. We had given direction to study this site anyway, and Mr. Wallace and his cadre of consultants have done a lot of that due diligence on behalf of the city, so I'd like to see more done on that. So if we could get sometime in the next several weeks, a schedule and a process for flushing out the TOD at the OMFE plan, for flushing out East Gate, and for flushing out the further work that council directed some time ago about the siding of Lincoln Center, OMFE, and East Gate, I would be very appreciative, because I know it's been kind of stalled for a moment, or at least stalled publicly for a while, and I'd like to see that come back. So, thanks very much, I really appreciate all the work.
Well, I am sitting. Go ahead.
Thank you. I haven't said anything about homeless issue, just talk about the presentations. So my position on East Gate homelessness is no, that's pretty clear. And I'd just like to move on, because we just saw the presentations, there's a lot of discussions that still need to be made, so rather than, we don't have time to talk about it.
Well, we are, we are gonna talk a bit-
So let's, let's move on for another section, sec, there's time to talk about this.
Yeah, aight.
We're getting, it's not on our agenda, so we should move on. Thank you.
I appreciate that, I, I do, would like to have a few comments as well, council members.
Sure, sure, sure. I mean, you should have your comment, I'm just giving my opinion.
All right, all right.
My opinion, so we should move on.
All right. Yeah, I think it's been a good conversation, I, I get tickled at, and this always happens, people change their minds, or it's always, you know, things change, and so I, I, I know there was a lot of agreement on all of these things we've been talking about, including, I think we knew what's going on with the TOD, we, we gave authority, and it's, okay, we'll find out, it's been a long, complicated process, we spent many a time on this, and it's easy to say, well, I don't think it's been, you know, it's been in the secret and all this stuff, it's, that, that doesn't help the conversation a whole lot, because that's so easy to say, particularly when it's not exactly accurate. I mean, I think the speaker just talked to us about, you know, it doesn't help when something's presented in a way that's not exactly copacetic with something that's going on, do you think? So putting all that aside, I mean, we're, we're trying to work through this, it's very difficult, and I think what's, I think Councilmember Seamus actually put a pretty good picture of the whole thing. Reality is, just like putting light rail through the city, we didn't put it, decide that we're not gonna put it next to a neighborhood, because we didn't want those people, you know, to be bothered, because we'll, we'll put it in the desert, so people aren't there, or we don't have those, we have to put them wherever they go, and that's why it's a public utility. I think we could probably put it on both these sites, if we keep it, keep that spur and use it for this purpose. I think we could put it other places, we could put it right across the street from 112th over there, and the, all it takes is money and time. We could put it in a lot of places. So we, we have, by everybody, we worked on this, and we did make decisions, the council members sometimes forget, we did make choices about where, on different sites, we looked at different sites, the OMFE was, at that time, there's no idea we'd even want to do something out there, because we had no idea, we're still working on what Sound Transit was gonna do, we knew the whole thing was gonna be redeveloped, and it wasn't a, put it on the, it was a conscious choice not to even pursue that. And we did have five, we came in a year ago, a year ago, we went to the public, and we had over 100 and something people at the, at the Champion Center, and we put up five different sites and said, this is what we've been looking at, and this is the criteria, and we're looking, this is the best place, based on what we thought at the time. And we've been talking about that for a year now, and we're still getting people say, it's been done in secret and et cetera, et cetera, and we don't have any process. It, it's been all out there, it's nothing that you don't, that you, that's not there that you don't know and hasn't been discussed. The issue is, how do we do this? And we are agreement that we need to have homeless shelter or shelters in the city, and we go outside, and, and we can go on these different processes, I think we look at these. When we start looking at OMFE, based on past history- When we start looking at OMFE, based on past history, we better have a full public process, and we need to get in terms of where we're going to, the city's going to spend its money. And that means other neighborhoods. And it means where the city as a whole, 140,000 people, want to spend their money. Because we're making options between something that's going to cost a lot and might not cost so much. What are the all, you know, pros and cons? But the ultimate thing is exactly what Councilmember Seamus said. The issue is, how do we do this and make it safe regardless of where it goes? And we can do that. We've talked about that a lot. People forget that. That's what we're going to focus on, what we'll focus on. And it could be put anywhere in this city. Anywhere in this city. And a choice has to be made based on criteria, and if you only have one, you put it in one place. You have light rail, you could have put it across in the division line, across, you know, by other neighborhoods and across there, out of the city. It was put in one place. And we mitigated that excellently, and we will do the same. And it takes the whole community working together and not with a negative attitude all along, because we have to do this. And we made a commitment. It's in our priorities. The council decided this a long time ago. We've been working on this for some time. And again, the community, it's going to happen somewhere, or else it is going to come into a situation that we do not want to think about. And so we'll have to work together. The people, the men are out there, the people are out there. They will freeze, they will have problems. The interesting thing is, it's been noted that we had a shelter over there in, by the International Paper Site, and there didn't seem to be any problems. Surprise. You know, so actually, it's not as scary as it's been painted. There are ways to deal with it. And we've talked about that a lot. There are reams of paper about how we work on this. So if we really want to do this and do it right, and whether it's in your neighborhood or my neighborhood or somebody else's, it has to be done right. And we can either work together on it and resolve it, or we can continue to have this kind of fruitless conversation back and forth. And I know, you know, I assume you have other things to do than come down to council meetings for a year and talk about the same thing over and over. We have to get together and really make this thing work. And we're going to do that. So, I think we've, we've talked about this. The whole point of this was to have this presentation tonight. We don't normally, you know, we bring things forward. Recommendations have been made by Councilmember Robertson, you know, to have some staff will look at these things and go forward on it. And there are just a lot of issues, and there are issues on the TOD development. As I said, they can do it with or without our spur. If we do it with the spur there, we certainly will work with them. We basically said, you know, "Do TOD, we want it," and that's what they're doing. So, all these processes are in place. This isn't, this is a very complex piece we're working on, and the city's working on it. So let's work together on it and try to make the best decisions for the whole city and for the people, our neighbors, people like us who might need this in the future, or people who need it now. And do it the right way, which we can do. So, it's time to move on to another topic.
So I believe we're at the moment of the consent calendar. I am just going to note that since we have Eastgate residents here in the audience tonight, there is money in here that gets us to the final PSNE, the planned specification and estimates on the pedestrian and bicycle improvements along Newport Way raises the budget for that to 1.422 million. And that's a project that I know people care about. We had walk to school here earlier. There is a acceptance of $515,000 to support construction of pedestrian improvements as a condition of the development of the new Wilberton Elementary School. And so that matches up to the walk to school. And there's also a sanitary sewer replacement for the Viewcrest neighborhood. That is my neighborhood, Jonathan. I didn't know anything about it, but I don't think it's a conflict of interest, so I'm going to still vote on our sewer replacement. So, I move the adoption of the consent calendar.
Motion's been made in second to approve the consent calendar. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Public hearing. All right. The next item is a public hearing scheduled this evening as item 9A on the agenda. It's Resolution 9315. It has to do with execution of documents necessary to relinquish a water line easement and a portion of a sanitary sewer easement located at 16231 Northeast 12th Place in consideration for the granting of replacement easements, the granting and recording of such replacement easements being deemed in the best interests of the public. Staff, you want to introduce this and move forward?
Mayor, councilmembers, just prior to opening the public hearing, we'd like to do a brief staff report. And then, once the public hearing is closed, we will be looking for direction from the council with respect to a resolution that is included in your pack this evening. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Patty Ebert.
I'll actually start us off. I'm Ira McDaniel, the real property manager. So as you may remember, back in May, we brought you a new administrative procedure for the release of easements. We did not have a written procedure before. So we, we put that together and received direction to begin bringing some of these easements forward under that new procedure. And so since May, we've been working to prioritize those projects, get them ready, and reviewed them at the staff level, and now we're starting to bring them forward to council. And this is the first one. It's the Viscaia Condominiums. And I'll turn it over to Patty Ebert.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. We'll keep this short tonight. I know it's getting late. Tonight, we're going to provide you with a short staff report on this request to release two utility easements. Through the utilities development review process, we received the request to release two easements. Utilities staff have been working with the developer and determined that the redevelopment, with the redevelopment, these easements were no longer needed, and new easements covering the utilities on this property have been executed and recorded. The original easements were both acquired in 1967 by the Lake Hills Sewer District and King County Water District 97. In the 1970s, the city assumed both of these districts, including all assets, real property, and easements. On September 5th, council set the public hearing date, sorry, changing my slide there. On September 5th, council set the public hearing date and determined these easements as surplus. Public notice was mailed to residents within a 500-foot radius on September 18th, and the public hearing notice was published in the newspaper the same day. The location of this property is on 164th Avenue Northeast at Northeast 12th Place. It's in the crossroads area and is surrounded by multifamily residences. It's the purple box up there. This diagram shows the location of the easements that are being released on the left or in yellow. The hatched easement is the sewer easement that's being released, and the solid yellow is the water line easement. And then the left, or the right side of your screen there, you can see a very small hatched area is a new sewer easement that we've acquired. And the very large green area is a new water line easement that's been already signed and recorded for this development. So following the public hearing, staff seeks council action on the resolution to release the surplus water line and sewer easement. And that concludes our presentation.
Okay. Motion to open the public hearing?
Second.
Motion's been made in second to open a public hearing. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No. The motion carries.
The staff was clearly looking for a lot of people to come down here tonight, because the printout includes 84 spots for people to sign up.
Have to be prepared. Nice.
No one has signed up. Is there anyone who, something tells me somebody hit print and then realized when they went to the printer that there was more than one sheet? Is there anybody out there who wishes to testify on this subject? Anyone who wishes to testify on this subject? I am seeing none. I'm going to move that the public hearing be closed.
Second.
Motion's been made in second to close the public hearing. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Say no. The motion carries. The public hearing is now closed. Are there any questions for staff? If not, there's a.
I would move adoption of Resolution 9315.
Second.
Motion's been made in seconded to adopt Resolution 9315. Any comments? It sounds like a very reasonable proposition, and kudos to the staff for working with that. And it looks like, actually, the new easements will be much more useful and make it much more a viable project, so that's great. All right. No, not yet. Just want to know if anybody else had anything to say. All right.
No, but he was coming close to getting me to debate him.
That's what we need. All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Noes? Motion carries unanimously, and the resolution's adopted. So, there are no other items scheduled on tonight's agenda, so for those people who have waited around, that brings us to item 13, continued oral communications. We have about 20 minutes, and same rules.
Mr. Mayor, I have two early call-outs the next two mornings for work, so I'm going to excuse myself at this point.
Okay. As long as we don't have, as long as we have a forum, then we're all right.
Things are picking up, huh?
Yeah.
And Mayor, we had, two individuals did sign up on the sheet in anticipation of continued oral communication. So, I know for sure Pamela Johnston is looking to speak, as is Sid Golstein.
Okay, great. Okay, you're up.
You're right, you're right, you're right, you're right, you're right, you're right, you're right. Everybody's right. The problem is, is that, like Councilmember Seamus was talking about, we're not talking about the right things, okay? So we're talking about the site, the site, the site, the site. After a year, there's still things that I don't understand, and it has nothing to do with the site. One, I'd like to see a vote on will we or will we not do more? And when I say do more, I mean, we're talking about King County, Congressional for Homeless, Imagine Housing. The original program was, we look at them and we say, "Here's the site, go for it." And we step back, right? So we have to decide, are we going to do more? Are we going to be involved in it, whether it's in Eastgate, or Lincoln Center, or wherever? We need to decide if we're going to do more. Then, I understand that Lincoln Center is not useful as a year-round site. I heard that somewhere. Okay. How long is Lincoln Center useful as a year-round site? I thought that we said that we could use it for a year-round, for a few years now. So I want to clarify that. Because one of the things that keeps getting confusing in this whole situation is it keeps saying winter shelter, permanent winter shelter. I want to make sure that we understand it's not a winter shelter, it's a shelter. We're not going to kick those people out next summer. Because when I hear people in the council forums, sometime, candidate forums, they're talking about, like, we don't have, this is like, almost as if this is the only shelter, and they're out on the streets right now. They're out on the streets right now because we kicked them out in April, right? We have a bad problem right now because we kicked them out in April. We didn't keep them in. We don't have a place for them right now, until, well, maybe, I don't know what the date starts, October. Then, we talk about supportive housing. There's different kinds of supportive housing. What kind of supportive housing are we doing? Are we doing transitional housing? Are we doing affordable housing? Are we doing what? Housing first? Are we doing housing first? What are we doing? What's a day center? What's it all about? What, you know, if we, we can't have separate, how are we going to deal with it if it's like two separate shelters? And the TOD residents? Okay, I have to go back to this situation, because putting a residential section near the industrial site of thing that's a nighttime thing, I still don't understand why we're doing that. So, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I wait for Deputy Mayor to come back?
He's not coming back. He's, he left. Thank you.
My name is Sid Golstein. My address is on record. I have a couple of comments regarding the distance to residential units. There's a big difference between Eastgate and the OMF site. In the Eastgate case, you have, you're putting a shelter next to existing units. I've been living there for more than 10 years. I didn't have a choice. I never anticipated that there would be a shelter. By the way, the distance is like 200 to 300 feet. I'm the first neighbor of the proposed site. In the case of the OMF site, future residents have a choice whether they want to live next to shelter or not. So there is no comparison, I guess, regarding the distance as to the residential units in case of the OMF site to Eastgate. I have a couple of comments also regarding Deputy Mayor's presentations. Regarding the public process, there was no public process. The public was notified after the Eastgate shelter was already selected. Mayor mentioned that the alternative sites were presented in Champion Center meetings, and these videos are public. The alternative sites were presented after public pressure in the second meeting. This was just like showing that some alternative sites were considered. The Champion Center meeting was not the venue that this site, alternative sites were analyzed. It was just like something that was presented, I think, just to present something in the second meeting, not in the first meeting. I, so I'm the president of our HUA. I've been like on the HUA board for years. On September 8th of 2016, we got this email from Kaiser and Lotus Development Partners that works for City of Bellevue and CFH. Like, I'm quickly going to read it. "I'm working with the City of Bellevue Neighborhood Outreach Team and Congressional for the Homeless on the public outreach process for a men's homeless shelter on the ground of the King County Public Health. This is a partnership between the City of Bellevue, Congressional for the Homeless, King County, King County Public Health, and Imagine Housing. The project would be new construction and include 100-bed men's shelter, as well as a day center and permanent supportive housing." Like, it's a long email. So, this is September of 2016. This is before Champion Center meetings. This was already decided without any public knowledge. There was no public process. I need a proof if someone says that, but that's not the case. Regarding the, Deputy Mayor said that there was a unanimous approval by the city council on the, adopting the Eastgate zoning. I think that was a trickery. Like, I mean, I think some of you remember that.
Your time's up, sir.
Okay.
Thank you. You can submit that to us. Okay.
Hi, I'm Laura Leto. I'm Laura Leto. My, my, everything is on file. You've seen me lots of times. I usually have something prepared, but I was so excited and really angry for two different reasons. So I felt compelled to speak. Councilmember Wallace, that was beautiful. It solves so many problems. It solves, I mean, I won't look at you if you feel like it. But, but it solves so many of the problems that we have been looking to solve in this, in the city concerning homelessness. It is near the hospitals. You know, I've spoken about this before. It is near emergency rooms, it is near medical, it is near methadone clinics, it is near, it is near the police station, it is near everything that these folks could need. It's bigger than anyone had thought, it is more organized than anyone had thought, it is being put in before anything else is being put in, so mitigation can happen. It is, it is wonderful. So, I just want to say something, that, that I was very, very pleased with that. I'm sorry that the Councilmember Chelmenac is not here. I wanted to share how his hypocrisy is so overt, and in that he will do anything to keep this out of his special spring district. It is a perfect place for this. And in terms of the Eastgate, I looked at that agreement today, just today. It is a non, it was clear that it was a non-binding agreement. There was a lot of, I looked at the FOIA, the stuff that came out. It is a non-binding agreement. It was clear that it was put in place so that there would be a discussion, and so that something could be moved forward to start studying this, that something needed to be. But it wasn't, there was nothing in there that made it seem that it had to be in Eastgate. So I just think, you know, I always shake when I get up here. But I think that this is a great opportunity for the homeless in our community. This is a great opportunity for Bellevue. And I think- This is a great opportunity for Bellevue, and I think that, that we can make that work. And it would fit with the King County plan that, that the consultants, that they paid for the consultants to come back with. This would fit with that regional plan. And anything that, that stonewalls that, I'm just, I'm just at a loss. I just don't get it. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, councilmembers. I am Tsachi Lito. And a lot of what I was going to say has already been said. So, thank you to Councilmember Wallace and to Councilmember Chelmiak in absentia. Actually, it was Councilmember Chelmiak that inspired me to talk as well. So, you know, Sid said it more eloquently than I can, and I don't need to repeat it, and hopefully, the Deputy Mayor will watch this. You know, he mentioned that, that it was an extensive process. It's simply disingenuous that, when he says something like that, especially after you hear everything, that there almost isn't anyone who comes up who, who speaks differently. You know, Councilmember Robinson, you made a comment about that the main reason that people seem to be against this or fighting it is poor sighting of the shelter. I'd actually argue that it's not, that, that the problem has been the process that the council has chosen to adopt, for whatever reason. So, there were just so many things. You know, Deputy Mayor again mentioned a unanimous vote for approval of zoning. What an incredible use of smoke and mirrors, right? I'm in this meeting, I'm listening and watching. He said, very straightforward, at that meeting, "This doesn't mean we're citing the pri, the place here. This doesn't mean," he calmed the, the community down. And now, very conveniently, it's a single line that says unanimous vote. You all voted for it. Just remember that. The, the concept and the idea of the sound transit betrayal of usurping the OMFE site. So, personally, I find it fascinating that nowhere in this conversation is the Eastgate TOD, that you all approved. You, you all approved it. And we talked about affordable housing, and what a great idea and concept that could solve a lot of these issues. But it seems to have disappeared in this process. You know, again, the, it was said before, but the Deputy Mayor never ceases to miss an opportunity to disagree with the sighting of the shelter in the OMFE site. I'd like to know why. I'm curious. Because I've never really heard, this, this is a blank slate right now, okay, compared to another, to, to other sites. So it'd be great to really understand. I mean, please sell us on the ideas to why that that's not a bad thing, that everything that we hear is, is more about the potential of what may be, and it's too close, or, or the, the land doesn't work. So, Councilmember Wallace showed us how to make that work. So, my time's up. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
My name's Julia Tai. My address is on record. I feel compelled to speak tonight because I live at one of those townhomes that are just minutes away from the proposed Eastgate site. I, once I learned that the shelter, first of all, I learned about the shelter from Bellevue Reporter. No one visited our townhomes to let us know this was going to be built. I had to learn from the local paper. And when, and our townhomes was one of the first ones that met with the city staff as part of their public outreach. We reached out to the city staff. At that meeting, I pointedly asked, "Did any of the staff come around and walk the property, the nearby properties, to know how it's laid out and how exposed we are to the shelter?" The answer was no. To me, that was unacceptable. Since then, I, along with some of the residents, have walked around the, our property to see how we can mitigate if the shelter would be cited. And to be honest, there is no way for us to mitigate it, because the way our buildings are constructed, what you're proposing is so unfair to us. I invite all of you to come and walk the property with us. Go to Sunset Ridge, come to Harmony, and, and see, and let us know. How do you plan to mitigate by setting the shelter? Because we are truly exposed, there, there's no way you can put in security systems like the high rises around here. So, I ask you to put yourself in our shoes. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
My name's Heidi Dean. I live at 11661 Southeast 56th Street in Newport Hills. And I'd like to take a moment to remind all of you that Sound Transit is an unelected board. We don't vote them in to represent us. We don't vote for CFH to speak for us. We don't vote for Imagine Housing to speak for us. So for any of those entities to be having closed-door meetings with staff and council members about something that's going to affect Bellevue residents and not have any Bellevue residents present to represent their own interests, that's unacceptable. And that is what happened for two years before this was ever rolled out to the public. Now, I don't know if the Deputy Mayor thinks we're stupid, or if he forgets that council meetings are taped, but I clearly remember that meeting, and I believe it was August 1st. I don't remember the exact date, it was in August, when the, the plan for the Eastgate TOD was presented after the planning commission had voted on it. And I remember, because I remember your face when it was rolled out, and the look of surprise on your face and how you had to ask Councilmember Wallace, because nobody knew. You didn't know, you didn't know, and you didn't know the Eastgate had, had been specifically targeted as the site for a shelter. So, and I remember specifically Planning Commission Chair Dawudas' face and how uncomfortable he was when he was asked by you, Councilmember Wallace, if the planning commission knew about the shelter at the time that they were making their vote and their recommendation. And that's the vote that you believed in, Mayor, because there were people present for that. So, all this smoke and mirror, again, with the Deputy Mayor saying that we need to move forward, it's been going on, there's been plenty of input from this, no, 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 no. And this is exactly what I talked to you about last week, Councilmember Seamus. You remember that? Thank you.
A little more time. Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, I'm at set two. The first thing I want to say is, it's not my backyard. If I use the standard of the due diligence report, my home is about 25,000 miles away from Eastgate. That's by intercontinental ballistic missile. The due diligence report states that the shelter site in Eastgate is 2,500 feet by car. Now, why would you expect a homeless man to take a car? The due diligence report states that the Bellevue College is a short bus ride away. Anyone who would waste their time to get on a bus from the location to get to Bellevue College, it's only 100 feet. So, the due diligence report states that by putting in Eastgate, it's going to prime the pump of Eastgate. It hasn't primed any pump for Wilberton Neighborhood. I have gone to as many meetings as I can. I specifically remember the first public meeting, and people there were like, "What else did you look at?" And Cameron Parker said, "This is the only place." So we protested, and at the second meeting, Dan Stroh presented three sites. I remember the transfer station. Oh, that was next to a school. What school? A dance school. And I don't wish it upon them to be so close to a homeless shelter site, but I do volunteer work right next to that school. The kids are chauffeured right next to that. It's not a security risk. The other was the fire station up at, by 148th, 156th. And all of the properties that I've seen compared to Eastgate are leftover useless properties. That's what they were there for. The reason they're available is because they're not good for anything. So this comparison with other properties to me is not a fair comparison. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. It's 10 o'clock. Meeting closed.